Just one.
We do the announcement before the pledge, after the pledge. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much and welcome. In accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make your presence known. Thank you very much. Welcome to the February 27, 2020, Vossoil Town Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, if you could do the roll call, please.
Counselors, Beedenbender here. Bogan.
Present.
Clark.
Here.
Cullum.
Here.
Dagwan.
Rap Grissette.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Levek.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. We're going to now have public comment. I would ask once again if you're here as a group, if your spokesperson would like to speak on the same topic of what you want to express, if you would like to all come forward as a group, that'd be great. If there are other speakers speaking about any topic that you feel that really resounds with you, but you don't care to necessarily come up and speak, you can just raise your hand or stand up, just so it kind of indicates that there are more people responding to that particular concept, okay? Thank you very, very much. So we're ready for a public comment. And again, if you didn't sign up before, you're still free to come up and sign up, and you don't have to come up as in the order that you signed up. So please come on up.
There you go. I don't deal with mics very often. Karla Cabral, Barnstable, and I'm with Sustainable Practices. And I'm just following up to see what actions the council has done as far as the municipal plastic bottle ban. We were here over a month ago regarding the plastic bottle ban, and so I'm just following up with that. And I just wanted to remind the council that last year, 11 towns on the Cape have already adopted this ban and are now moving forward with commercial bans. And the outstanding three towns, not including Barnstable, have filed the municipal bans. So every town on the Cape except for Barnstable has filed the bottle ban. So we would just like to ask Barnstable again to join this Cape-wide effort, and we would welcome the opportunity to do a presentation before the committee for educational purposes, if you guys would like that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susannah Nickerson, also with Sustainable Practices. I'm the Chatham Liaison. And I just urge you, sincerely urge you, to proceed with the ban. All the other towns that have joined together, each town that joins in, it makes the ban stronger and easier for merchants and easier for the public. It's really time that we, as Cape Cod and as human beings, took a stand for ourselves and our futures to reduce our use of plastic. And this is an easy way for people to do it, a way that people understand and that sends a message about plastics and the ill effect on humans and animals internationally. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Cody. I'm a resident of Sandwich, and I'm also the filer in Sandwich for the successful passage of the municipal bottle ban. This is my second time here to speak to you again about this very important health and environmental issue, the municipal bottle ban. Because it is my second time, I have chosen to quote from Greta Thunberg to express my concerns to you. "We need to get angry and to understand what is at stake. Then we need to transform that anger into action and to stand up together, united, and just never give up." This is my hope for a united Cape Cod on this issue. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Anne Rowland, and I live in Centerville. I came before you a couple of weeks ago and talked about the fact that my youngest daughter, my youngest, and her husband are looking to buy a house, and they've saved their money, they've got a mortgage commitment, and they are locked out of Barnstable. They cannot afford to live here. And I am up here to talk about Airbnbs and letting them in this town, I believe will be a true detriment if we add more Airbnbs to this town. I have one across the street. I believe that they have escalated the prices of houses in the town of Barnstable, and I do not believe that more non-resident owners of property here on the Cape will help Cape thrive. It'll be commercial businesses owning property without any type of involvement within the community. And when I spoke the last time, I said, "I don't know what any alternatives are." Has anyone thought about alternative septic systems? Has anyone thought about trying to bring in more business to this town for more jobs and more income for the tax base? There are a lot of alternative systems. I know we have to sewer all the wetlands, the properties around the lakes and the ponds and the beaches, but there's a lot of property that could well be tested by the owners. Put a mandate in that owners have to get a perk test, and if they don't pass, they'll have to get a Title V and an alternative system. And there are many alternative systems available now. I would strongly suggest that we try to limit the Airbnbs in this town. We've already got zoning in this town. If we keep it to that zoning rather than expand it. I have an Airbnb across the street from me. It's a nightmare in the summer. It's a nightmare. And people are there. It's not their fault. They rent the house, and they're on vacation 24 hours a day. They're on vacation, and it's very disturbing to a neighborhood. And I think, I know you all have heard this before. So I hope you take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to speak, please come up. I just want to point out that if anyone wants to speak regards to the short-term rentals, when we have the workshop, that won't be open for public comment. So if you want to speak on that issue publicly, please come up at this time. There will be no questions and answers from the public at the workshop. Thank you.
My name is Juliette Farrell. I live in Marson's Mills. I'm about to turn my mother's home into an Airbnb, so I'm concerned with these new rules. I am not a company. I'm a private person. The house is less than a mile from my house, and I'm heavily invested in what happens in that house, and I don't want it to be a nightmare for anybody, including myself. I don't think that the private ownership of homes like this should be treated the same as commercial ventures because I'm here and I'm not some foreign entity, and I do care. I wanted to address some of the issues from the last meeting last week. Looking through your rough draft, there are a couple of kind of vague terminologies in here I wanted to just address. In the first page where you discuss the front yard, the area between the roadway and the part of the structure nearest to the roadway. So like, for example, from my situation, my mother's property has a dirt driveway in the front of the house, and then there is a grass drive out by the woodshed at the back. We've always driven through. You can drive right through it, like from one part of the road to the other. So is the part that's grass going to be considered not a driveway, even though it's been commonly used as one for decades? So I think that, you know, that's on page four as well, where it says that, oh, was it page four? Wait a minute. Yes. Page four. There's something about, oh, yeah. Where parking shall not be in any cultivated or landscaped area. Now, obviously, you don't want people parking on the flower beds, but what is the definition of that? Because that's lawn. So if that's considered cultivated, I'm not allowed to have people park there, but we park there. Like I said, we've been parking there for decades. So I don't, I think that needs to be addressed. The other thing is the prohibition of large events. I keep thinking about my good friend's wedding back in 2008. She lives in Brewster. Everyone who attended the wedding lives on Cape Cod. They rented a home relatively near the beach, north of 6A, where we all prepared for the wedding. They got married on the beach. We had a horse-drawn carriage that took the wedding party from the house to the beach and back. It was a beautiful wedding, one of the best ones I've ever been to. But according to these rules, those people would not be allowed to have had that wedding there. And again, it's all local people who were there. They did rent it, and it was a short-term rental. So my mother's house. I got married at my mother's house. It's a small, private place on a cranberry bog. It's lovely for a small event. We put up a tent. We didn't bother anybody. Nobody probably even knew. So I really think that, you know, and a lot of people want to come here and get married. We live in one of the most beautiful places in the world. So I really think that a blanket prohibition of, "Oh, you're going to put up a tent, forget it," you know, I don't think that's really fair or realistic. And, I mean, there's a lot of good people who have a perfectly normal event, and they don't bother anybody. So I don't think those people should be punished because you got a few bad apples having a rave. You know what I mean? There's a difference between a wedding and a rave.
Yep. Ms. Farrell, if you could.
I'll wrap it up.
Thank you very, very much.
The other, one more issue is the, and I know we talked about this at the last meeting as well, but the, again, the rough draft terminology about bringing things up to today's current code, when bed and breakfasts and stuff only have to go with the code they were at when they went in, I think that needs to be fine-tuned because, you know, there's people like, my mother's footsmoke alarms are wired in, but I know there's probably people who have older homes where it's going to cost them gobs of money to rip ceilings out and stuff and put wires, and that's not fair.
Thank you.
Okay? And that's it. Thank you very much. And yes, ban the plastic bottles, please.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bob Ward, and I live in Barnstable. I'm coming tonight to not give any answers to questions, but just ask some questions on the short-term rental regulations. I don't attend, this is probably the second meeting I've gone to in Barnstable. The first one was last, I believe, Tuesday night. There was a committee meeting informational because I have some individuals that have turned to me and asked me for them, for help in their situation of rentals. And so I said, "Well, I'll look into it, and I'll report back to them." And it seems to me, I'm not sure if I've got the idea of this. Maybe you can help me. There's a desire or need for rules to regulate short-term rentals, and this started, as I understand it, February. Well, we're, this is February, so I have a handout February, and it says, "We're now starting this process." So I read through that, and it seemed as though, and from attending that other meeting, there were two reasons that there was a need for rules. More rules than we've already got on the books, which seem to satisfy lots of everybody's concern. One is for safety of guests, and the other was the nuisance complaints by neighbors. And I haven't heard any other kind of reasons for the rules. You know, there've been some tangential ones about, oh, that the city's going to make a lot, the town's going to make a lot of money off this. Town's not going to make a lot of money. You've got 600 now supposedly registered, and I understand that you just have no idea if it's another 600, or another 1,200, or another 100, because no statistics are solid or valid, or validated yet. So my question is on the safety of the guests. Right now, the homeowner who rents out his property is responsible for the safety of his guests. If the town imposes these rules and regulations, are you sharing that responsibility with your pocketbook? If he gets sued because somebody falls down the stairs, will the town step in and help him defend that action and pay for that too? Because now you're taking on the responsibility of guaranteeing the guest the safety of that place. I think that's a dangerous precipice to go to. Shared responsibility by the town. Do you want to do that, and what's the cost of that? I haven't seen any statistics from the hospitals as far as safety injuries related to homeownership or rental properties, or vacation properties, or short-term, specifically, short-term rentals. So when do we get, in order to make an intelligent decision, I think we've got to have some statistics from the hospitals, the fire department, ambulance, police department, the health department inspectors, and the building inspectors. What does short-term rental, what have they generated? What kind of problems have we had with safety? Have they fallen downstairs? Please conclude. That's good. Okay, I'll try to wrap it up quicker then. We need some statistics. Now, maybe you already have them, and I haven't seen them yet. And I guess I can't ask that question because it's not a back-and-forth session. Maybe somebody will educate me after this. The other thing is nuisance complaints by the neighbors. Well, there are 600 supposedly rental units. How many complaints were in 2019? Does anybody have a number for that? 2018, 2017? Where's the numbers?
So, Mr. Ward, I'm going to ask you to really kind of, and you are correct. Counselors will make comments to your comments, what we're able to comment on.
Okay.
Okay? So thank you very, very much.
One last comment. And that is, what is the legal department's opinion as far as taking the property right of an individual to use his property as he sees fit that's not in detriment to the community? You're taking an, you're reaching into his pocket and taking money out of it. Are you willing to give that man that amount of rental for him not to rent his property?
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Ward. I appreciate it. Oh, thank you.
Deb Crowe. I live in Hyannis. I believe all the counselors have received the recommendations from a group of the civic associations, so I'm not going to read those to you. But I am going to ask some questions and make a proposal that we proceed cautiously. We have no idea what an environment we're entering into. We don't know what the economy's going to do coming forward. We don't know how many of these there will be. We don't know how the town can even deal with the ones that we have. There's also an assumption in the town's proposal that there's an unlimited demand for these short-term rentals, and that everybody who wants to have a short-term rental will get it, and that everybody will be able to offset their costs. I don't know that there's an unlimited demand, but everyone who has been on this topic for a long while has said there is not enough data on either side of this issue. Not enough data at all. So why move forward ahead, letting anybody who wants to have a license get one? My suggestion is, is that we cap the number of licenses. There are 600 now. The civic association says 800. I don't know. What do you want? 900? 1,000? But don't leave it wide open. And then get something in place. Many people don't want to call the police to report a problem, but we don't have any other place to call. So get a database system out there for all properties. Don't single out short-term rentals. For all properties. And when that system's been in place for a year, and you have a great understanding of what this new market and new thing is, then you can decide if you want 1,500, 2,000. Heck, there's 23,000 residential properties in Barnstable. Maybe all of them should be able to rent whenever they feel like doing it. But you gotta take it piece by piece. You gotta have a system to track them, and you have to make sure that there's enough resources in this town to enforce the regulations. You also have to make sure that you're not destroying the water supply. One Aquifer, we all have to use it. The requirements in your proposed legislation is two per every bedroom plus two extra because you can always put some on the living room floor. The Board of Health says that if you have, are on a septic system, you can have two for the first bedroom, two for the second bedroom, and one for each remaining bedroom. For a three-bedroom house, that's the difference between five and eight. Multiply that by everybody who wants to rent. So I understand people who want to help support the house they have. Most of them don't live in them year-round. Many of us do live in our houses year-round. Proceed cautiously. Set a limit on what you'll do. Get a system in place to log all the comments on any property, okay? And then wait a year for that system to collect data and make sure that the town can enforce whatever you pass. Whatever you pass as short-term rental legislation, and then reevaluate it. And I'm hoping you will do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jamie Frazee. I am a single dad. I divorced my wife 13 years ago. I supported my two young children and still do. To have the ability to rent a room or rent out for Airbnb is huge in trying to keep your home. Not everybody can afford to just have their house and work their, work their job as a single parent. I have a friend that's a schoolteacher. She moves out of her home for the summer and rents that home as an Airbnb, or to nurses, because it's what she needs to do in order to retain ownership of that house. There is a huge difference between a corporation trying to own multiple properties in the town of Barnstable versus a resident of the town of Barnstable, permanent resident of the town of Barnstable, trying to rent out their home, whether it's their main home or a secondary home. I propose you put a cap on how many homes. I propose you put a cap on how many homes you're allowed to rent as an Airbnb, rather than strictly looking at short-term rentals as a problem. You know, the reality is, you know, looking, let's not put a burden on residents of the town of Barnstable, a further burden by demanding that we get a yearly septic inspection, as was proposed at one point, which is ridiculous. The septic inspection Title V happens when a transfer of ownership comes about with a home. Why allow, you know, make a rule that smoke detectors, carbon monoxide, need to be a yearly inspection or biannually inspection, when you can rent your home or a bed and breakfast, the same as a septic, and not have that same rule in place? You're putting a burden, if you create rules as proposed, you're putting a burden on residents of the town of Barnstable that are going to lose their homes. Then you're going to have investors that come in, buy homes, and rent them long-term. Does that do the town of Barnstable any good? It doesn't. Prohibition of large events, again, as was spoken about. If I want to rent my home to a family that wants to have a wedding, they're going to have a wedding at the home, have it catered, it mentions catering and a tent, and they're going to have a minimum, a maximum number of people stay within the home, but they're going to have a wedding in my home and put people up in a motel or a hotel. Why? Why put a restriction on that? There's no reason at all. By the way, ban plastic bottles. Thank you.
My name is Chuck Sabat. I'm a resident of the town of Barnstable, Village of Osterville. I'm also on the board of the Osterville Village Association. There are three major areas, or three areas I'd like to address tonight. One is with respect to the proposal that's before you. I have a couple of observations about that. The first is, is that I don't think that the penalties that are prescribed here or suggested here are strong enough. I think they're incredibly benign. In the event of a, of a first violation, there's merely a warning that's given. In the event of a second, it's $100, and so on. I think that if you're going to try to regulate these things, you need to have more significant penalties in place. Because if these people are renting these places out for a significant amount of money, and I don't know what they go for on a weekly basis, $100 for a second violation is just a cost of doing business. And I think you have to put some more teeth into this. Secondly, I didn't notice in my read-through of this that there was any limitation on occupancy. We do have a regulation in the, in the town, in our ordinances, that does limit occupancy, that's intended for year-round residents, renters, and owners. But I didn't see anything in here that addressed occupancy with respect to these short-term rentals, and I would submit to you that you may want to consider some kind of a limitation on the number of occupants of these units. And finally, one thing that I noticed is that even though, by implication, there's a section in here that talks about compliance with all other regulations and all other rules, there should be some specific reference to our own noise regulation and our own noise ordinance. Because that's really one of the crucial problems with these short-term rentals, that people are experiencing and are being bothered by noise that's emanating from parties and gatherings at these short-term rentals. So I think you should make specific reference to that regulation so that it's clear that a violation of that regulation is also a violation of this regulation. The second area that I'd like to talk to you about is that there are really three groups here that have interests in all of this, that are in somewhat of a conflict. And that's why you have one group on one side that wants an outright ban, or a ban in some areas in particular, and another group that's reflected in this submission tonight that wants to have them universally regulated and universally permitted. You know, there are some people that are fearful that this is going to impact on their livelihood. There are people that are fearful it's going to impact on their ability to supplement their income. And I understand that, because my own family, years ago, we lived in a home in Centerville, and we had, my parents had cottages in the back. They rented out those cottages to supplement their income. We eventually moved to Hyannis. I grew up in a neighborhood not too far from here. It was all single-family homes with all working people. Eventually, there were a series of duplexes that were built on one side of the street, all owned by absentee landlords. And I can recall very clearly, in the summertime, there were parties, there was noise and commotion in the streets, and, and there had to be something done about it. I think you can come up with a, a regulation that accommodates all of these interests. For example, you could ban in some areas, but exempt from that ban, properties that are owned by residents of the town of Barnstable, such as the woman that addressed you earlier. You could exempt from that ban, properties that are managed by and rented through licensed real estate brokers, because they tend to be and have responsible tenants and engage in screening. And finally, my third area is, that you can see by the attendance tonight, that this is a sensitive issue. There are people that are very concerned about this. As I've mentioned, there are these three various interests that are involved here. And I think that you can take, you have the authority to tell the planning department and instruct the planning department to engage in more public outreach, to have more hearings, to meet with the civic associations. There are four in particular that have taken a strong position on this. Meet with them, get more input from the public. Don't leave us with the perception, and it may not be a reality, but it may be, but it ultimately will be a perception, that not every group was listened to. And I think that you need to take more time to have more input and get more suggestions about reaching an accommodation among all these various interests. Thank you.
My name's Jeremiah Hegarty, town of Barnstable. I was born and raised here. And I just want to start by saying, you know, I'm, I'm of the belief that a difference in opinion and intelligent conversation will ultimately lead to the most educated decision. So I enjoy hearing both sides of the story. You know, I have friends and groups that may disagree with what, what I might say, but the bottom line is, I think that everybody wants what's best for the community, and we just have different approaches in reaching that goal. So, no hard feelings anywhere. I've operated short-term rentals over the past four summers, and during that time, we stayed with either, well, my wife and I, we just got married in September, we stayed with either her parents or my parents, and it's just the way that we had to do it in order to move back to the town that we grew up in. So I wanted to touch on one thing, the proceeds from these rentals, you know, obviously, they allow us to live in the town, but the, the two things that they go to, number one is paying the mortgage, and number two is improving the property. So, you know, we'd like to think that there's a benefit to the community in that, in, you know, making, making the house more aesthetically pleasing, inside-out, and as well as, last summer, we got hit with a, a new septic, which was $15,000. And without the, you know, rental money, I don't know, I wouldn't have had a way to pay it, you know, maybe just hand the keys over at that point. So it's, it is important to, you know, leave the flexibility open to people who, to do what they have to do to get by. So like I mentioned, my wife and I grew up here, in the third row. Good friend Ryan, he's, he's even quite a bit younger than I. He's 25, and he's a Mass Maritime grad. He didn't think that he'd ever be able to move back to Osterville, where he also grew up. And he's fortunate enough, last summer, just before the summer, he was able to buy a home not far from where he grew up, in Osterville, and rented it out through the summer. And the two of us, when we rent our houses out, you know, we, we drive by constantly. You know, one, because we're curious, and more importantly, we want to make sure that the tenants are doing right by the neighbors and taking care of our homes. So, you know, there's this perception out there of corporations taking over, but there are a lot of people who have to do it in a meaningful way and, and really care about what's going on in their home, what's going on in their neighborhood. So those are a couple of points that I wanted to touch on. Another thing that short-term rentals, especially around where I'm from, it seems like the longer the stay, the less, you know, just in the small group that I'm going off of, the, the longer the stay, the less frequently they go out to dinner. They go out in the, you know, among the town. A lot of times, if it's a full month, they might go to Stop &amp; Shop and stock up on goods. If they're there for a week, or maybe five days, they go to Fancy's Market and get, you know, they're supporting local businesses. You know, they go out to dinner maybe four out of the five nights, if it's a shorter stay, whereas the percentage drops off quite a bit if it's a longer stay. You know, so the, the last issue I want to talk about is the caps, because obviously, you know, when you hear about, you know, I heard the Marriott buying up multiple properties and running it, you know, I think that that's an issue that the town of Barnstable isn't currently dealing with. So I just want to make sure we're not addressing problems that, that we don't actually have. You know, because someday, I know Ryan and I, both our goals is to hopefully own multiple rental properties, leave them to our kids, and, you know, make sure that they're able to, to stay in Osterville as well. And I have heard the argument about, you know, less affordable year-round housing because of the short-term rental market, but I think the root of that problem kind of goes more towards like job creation. I'd love to see a lot of the people I went to Barnstable High School with come back here, and they're dying to. But the issue isn't the shortage of housing, it's the shortage of job opportunity. So, you know, I think it's important to, to keep all the issues in perspective.
Thank you, Jeremy. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Matthew Tag. I am a former resident of the town of Barnstable, and now I live about 200 yards over the Barnstable Line. And I'm also, for several years, I was a member and chairman of this very planning board. So I sat in your seat, and I understand the difficult task you guys have in terms of crafting and responding to the needs of the community. I just want to touch on a couple of points. My family has owned and operated a short-term rental in Barnstable Village for 13 years without incident. We recently, due to the floods in 2018, were forced to rebuild that property and have a significant investment in this town and the continued responsible use of the property as a short-term rental. You hear a lot of talk about Airbnb, right? So it's, it's a dirty word. Airbnb is a platform that allows people to reserve and rent their property. That's it. So the reason we like to use it is because you get potential renters with a rental history. So they may have rented five, 10, 15 other properties. I travel, I use it all the time. And they say, geez, Matt's going to rent my property, he's got five-star reviews from all the other landlords he rented from, probably a good option. Now, if I rent from Kinlan Grover, as long as my check clears, I get in. They don't know who I am, they don't do a background check on me, they don't know if I've ever rented a property anywhere, and if I'm a good tenant. Right? So the, so the Airbnb word is not a dirty word. It's a great platform and a great way to build communities, and we have met some wonderful people as both landlord and tenant through that process. Secondly, statistics, okay? We've heard, we, the Mass Department of Revenue has imposed the short-term rental tax. We know there's about 600 units in the town. Those are the people who elected to apply and comply with the law, right? So the people who are not going to do that, you're not going to know about until you catch them, almost impossible to do. So take that list of properties, poll the police blotter, and find out how many nuisance calls were to those properties during the rental period. The Mass DOR makes you, makes you report by night of occupancy, by date. That list exists. I'll be happy to come in on a weekend, somebody gives me the information, I'll do it. Right? It's going to take 20 minutes on an Excel spreadsheet. Don't, don't react to a problem that may or may not exist until those statistics are in place. Furthermore, you think of the dollars involved, that's a 14 and 1/2 percent tax that's being paid. Now, I know most of that goes to the state, okay? But our own property this year, we're probably going to pay over $10,000 or $15,000 towards that. But, you know, we're, we're, we're happy to be responsible members of this community and continue to, to stand for responsible regulations, public safety, the inspection process, which you already have on the books, right? And all the language in this current draft proposal is about having a responsible party, right? Add that name to the Board of Health checklist, add two names to it, people who can respond within an hour, 20 minutes, whatever it is. Solved, right? That's the whole argument here. Okay? The other part is, is that when I was on the planning board, I joined because I had a cause, right? I had a cause for, to talk about, like my, the former speaker, Mr. Hegarty, talked about. My children grew up here, went to Barnstable High School. They want to come back and live here. What's a sensible way to do that? Accessory apartments. I was laughed out of the town manager's office five, 10 years ago. That's a crazy concept. We're, it's going to kill the subsidy. How are we going to do this? That's insane. I've never seen a zoning or regulatory proposal with such vigor over a problem that may or may not exist. So take your time, do it right, listen to both sides, sensible regulation and sensible application of the law, we're for it, but take your time and do it right. Thank you.
My name is John Crowe. I'm the president of the Osterville Village Association. Tonight, I will be reading a letter from the president of the Centerville Civic Association, David Sorrell. He's down in Florida, was not able to attend this meeting tonight, and asked me to read his letter for him. It's to the town of Barnstable, Mr. Paul Hebert, president of town council. Dear Mr. Hebert, last fall, I attended a town council meeting, and one of the items on the agenda that evening was for the council's vote to purchase 310 Main Street in Centerville for the purpose of a sewer treatment pumping station. At that meeting, I asked on behalf of the Centerville Civic Association that the council not vote in favor of purchasing the property at that time, so that more time could be spent to review other options. Although most of the public in attendance that evening spoke in support of the Cape Cod, the Centerville Civic Association position, the town council still voted in favor to purchase the property. I am not able to attend the town council meeting this evening. Again, on behalf of the Centerville Civic Association, we are asking that the town council takes the necessary steps to review all options and issues regarding the short-term rental issue that this town is dealing with. Our association recently reviewed this issue with an informal, open village meeting attended with, by over 50 residents, and concluded with a concern over this issue. As a resident of the Village of Centerville for over 40 years, I feel honored to represent the village as their civic association president. I know the other village association presidents and board members that are expressing their thoughts to the council on this issue also take heart, take to heart their love of this town. Also, I know that the council members operate with the same love for the town. We are asking that you hear the position of the civic, village civic associations as we are the voice of the people. Appreciate your understanding, and if any questions, feel free to contact me. Respectfully, David Sorrell, president of the Centerville Civic Association.
I just want to also reiterate what Deb Crowe came out and said. What you have before us from our group is a compilation of negotiations between four of the civic associations in this town, and also with another civic association sitting in and monitoring the conversation. It is a compilation of what we think it would be best for regulations for this town, and reasonable for what we're talking about coming down in the future. There's a lot of people worried about where this is going and the impact it's going to have on our neighborhoods if every other property is a short-term rental. And it's going to cause a lot of disruption, and we ask that you take some more time and listen to what we have to say, and allow us in on the process to discuss the specifics of this issue. Thank you for your time tonight.
My name is Martin McNeely. I live in Marson's Mills. I've worked for the past 31 years as a fire inspector for the Centerville Fire Department. However, I'm not here tonight representing the fire department in any way, just want to make that clear. In addition, I work for a short-term vacation rental company that has several rental properties in the town of Barnstable. Finally, I'm also president of the Old Post Landing Association, which is a development in Marson's Mills between Old Post Road and Putnam. My neighborhood has both short- and long-term rentals. But the vacation company I work for does not manage any of these rentals, including the short-term rental that is right next to my house. I am speaking here tonight for the hundreds of vacation rentals that occur throughout Barnstable during each summer week without disrupting neighbors or neighborhoods. Although much has been said over the last several months about the problems caused by short-term rentals, we should also remember the property rights of these owners who have successfully rented their homes for many years, or even decades, in Barnstable without incident. In fact, several of these owners spoke at the last subcommittee meeting this past Thursday evening. The proposed regulations are certainly not perfect, but do address many of the issues that have been brought to, to the attention of the regulatory subcommittee. that have been brought to, to the attention of the regulatory subcommittee. Barnstable, like most communities, has housing enforcement issues, which likely have existed since the first house was originally constructed in this town. The housing problems facing Barnstable are not limited to short-term rentals. They exist across the board, from hotels and motels to lodging houses and boarding houses, to short-term and long-term rentals, and to owner-occupied, single-family homes. Any final regulations adopted by the town council should not only apply to short-term rentals, but to all housing in the town of Barnstable. Our to, our town, as you all know, has a tourism-based economy, and many of those who live and work in our community are able to do say, do so either directly or indirectly from the dollars brought here by tourism. The trickle-down effect from short-term rentals financially connects money of, many of us in town, from the restaurant and pubs, to the ferries and mini-golf, to the museums and beaches. The income short-term rental owners receive in turn is used to pay for carpenters, plumbers, landscapers, and the trash company, just to name a few. Let's also not forget that oftentimes this revenue pays for the owner's property taxes, along with the lodging taxes, of which a portion goes to the state of Massachusetts, the town of Barnstable, and the wastewater fund. In closing, I feel that any short-term regulation that is ultimately enacted by this town council should address neighborhood concerns without needlessly applying a significant regulatory or financial burden on the owners of short-term rentals. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank the subcommittee for their work to date, and I'm looking forward to monitoring the progress of these regulations as we move forward. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mr. President and Council. My name is Brian Kobel, and I'm a resident of Osterville. And much of the discussion we've heard tonight is, is, is very complicated, and we understand this is quite a task ahead of everyone. But I'm also hearing quite a few commonalities and a lot of discussion after the subcommitting meeting last, like led to several questions within people that I've been speaking with. But I can actually condense them down because some of them have been covered already tonight. But, so I promise you, you're not going to need the hook to pull me off. Firstly, what does the town take into consideration when addressing the potential impact to neighboring properties in either direction? That would be something that would be very interesting to see in some level of detail. How has the town, or how does the town plan to solicit feedback from non-resident and winter travelers who happen to spend the winter off Cape but have a significant investment in the town? We've heard a lot of discussion about revenue generated from STR taxes. Is there a number that actually defines that at this point to the town? Simply a question. I know you have new systems that have come in recently and starting to get your heads around that, but once the number is identified, it'd be very interesting to know what that number is. And then lastly, as one of the gentlemen before me had mentioned, the number we heard at the subcommittee meeting last week was 601 STR properties. Also heard discussion to that end, that it might be, the number may be double that, maybe even triple that, from some of the folks that were in that business and actually discussing it. And I understand it's probably a difficult number to nail down in its entirety, but as another gentleman had said before, moving forward with new regulations without that most simple number nailed down, just in my opinion, seems to be a little bit rash. Thanks for listening.
Good evening. My name is Peter Hanson, resident of Osterville, also a part of the Oster Village Association. I have a few additional questions at the civic association and zoning subcommittee to present. Excuse me. Question regarding data, the town staff, subcommittee, and civic associations all agree that there is not enough data today to evaluate or determine what the scope of the STRs or rental properties. Given this fact, why is the town proposing unlimited regulations and opening up STRs to all zones and all areas without more data? Will the town consider the recommendations to put in tighter controls up front and commit to revisit in a year after the regulations are in place and more data is available? Next question, high-risk rentals. Airbnb has experienced causes to flag properties booked by guests for one- and two-night rentals as high risk. Did the subcommittee consider this when proposing no nightly minimum limits? Number seven, occupancy. The town's current comprehensive occupancy regulations allow for two people in each of the first two bedrooms and one in each thereafter. Why would the proposed STI regulations allow for a higher number, two per, two per all bedrooms plus two more? This encourages overcrowding of homes from a health and safety perspective and proposes an even higher risk to the water quality if the resident is not on town sewer. The last question, banned events. The proposed regulations would ban catered or professionally-run events at STRs. Why does this not a ban, why does this, why does the ban not apply to BYOB or larger events when STI renters cook their own food, which would encourage even larger gatherings in residential neighborhoods?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelly Summers. I live in Hyannis. I don't like to public speak, so please excuse my nervousness. There's a lot of this Airbnb that I'm trying to digest and understand, but I just wanted to share a piece of it from my perspective and how it's going to affect my family.
Kelly?
Yeah.
Could you pull the mic a little closer to you?
Oh, sure.
And the little light is on, right? The little green light?
Uh, yes, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I speak quietly.
Just relax, no problem.
I know. Thank you.
You're good, thanks.
Thank you. I am the third generation of my family to live year-round in Hyannis. I own a duplex wherever I reside with my family. We have a two-bedroom unit. We don't allow more than four people, and we use it for short-term rental. My family depends on this and come for our bills and for our children. Without it, sorry, I hate speaking in public.
Would you like someone to read it for you?
I, I asked my husband, he said no.
One of us could read it for you if you want.
It's okay, it's okay, I can do it.
Kelly, you're, you're fine, okay? You're among friends here, just no problem, okay? Oh, here he comes. Hey!
Where were you at?
I think I can do it, just stand here with me.
Okay.
Without it, we would likely be among the many families struggling to stay on Cape Cod. I support a lot of this plan and the intentions behind it, especially with investment properties for people that don't live in the area. But one of the aspects that hasn't been talked about is the seven-day minimum, so I just wanted to add my feedback on that. We allow people to book up to two weeks at a time, but we rarely get a seven-day booking. My typical renter is a family with children that books an average of three to five days. They often choose to arrive and depart on low-traffic days. These families want an enriching Cape Cod experience, with local flair and recommendations from local residents not to stay in a hotel. Limiting this flexibility would not just hurt my family, but these types of tourists who might not be able to afford a full week on Cape Cod due to finances or time constraints. Also encouraging seven-day rentals would increase weekend traffic, limit available fair-price cleaners on the weekend, and reduce local cleaners workload midweek. On top of being the third generation here, I'm also the third generation to supplement our income to stay here by short-term rentals. My parents and grandparents also did it, and they also did the traditional weekly, weekly rentals, but I don't think that traditional weekly rental really applies to today. And this is just an example of that. So I understand the concerns about large parties, and I understand what people are saying with having those large properties and that, but, but I'm hoping that you guys take into consideration the impacts that these limits have on local, fully-present, year-round families with small units like myself. It's just invaluable for us to stay here.
Thank, thank you very much. Good grief, my sweetheart.
Good evening. Tyler Murphy, Barnstable. To take a little different perspective on the issue, our president has brought a number of issues to light in his term. One could be global warming, another could be equality, one is immigration. The response to that was build a wall. The Cape doesn't have a wall, it has bridges. It has always been a place of tourism and a place that we welcome and share our environment with other people. I'm a lifetime resident, born at Cape Cod Hospital, and while this isn't a wall, it's potentially moving towards a figurative wall. And that's not what I don't think the Cape or our community stands for. So I implore you to continue to find a working solution and not a ban or a wall. Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh.
Kathy Holcomb from Centerville, and I hadn't planned to speak, but I felt compelled based on many important stories that were told tonight about people who have depended, in the traditional sense, on renting their homes, home sharing, which was the initial concept with Airbnb. Those of us who have spoken up in defense of our residential neighborhoods being invaded by investors, people who have no context, it's a different matter. We have no problem with the sort of rental that's been described here, which is a very important part of the Cape tradition. One thing that hasn't come up, because the short-term rental issue is being talked about as overlaying every zone in every town in all of Barnstable in sort of a flat manner, and what is not being considered is that most of the people who spoke tonight about home sharing live in zones that allow rentals. And what they're doing is not up for question under the current zoning for the town of Barnstable. In those areas where no rentals at all are mentioned in the zoning code, we have never experienced rentals in our neighborhoods. This is something new. So what I'm asking this group to consider as they look at the whole short-term rental issue is that zoning matters. It has provided certainty and protection to those of us who chose neighborhoods that allowed no rentals, whatever. I see faces, I see whatever. That's just a reality. It's the way the town has been zoned for decades. And so much of when, what has been described tonight is acceptable, traditional, normal, not a problem. We don't have a problem with that. I hope that resonates with you. I hope you take it into account. It's not someone accused it of being redlining. It's not. It's zoning. It's a fact. This town was zoned properly. It's been run properly for decades, and it's something that you need to think about. If you're actually not familiar with zoning, and I suggest that a lot of people are not, take a deep dive into it. It's really quite illuminating. Thank you. And could I also ask, would, would the people who have come here tonight because they are concerned about the zoning aspect of this, could, could, could they just raise their hand?
No.
No.
It'd be better not to, thank you.
And thank you for taking this into account.
Thank you very much. If you've already spoken once, you're not allowed to speak again.
I promise I'll be really, really ready.
No, no, because, because if I do it, if I give you the right to do it, then everybody else has a right to come up and make. Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else? Thank you.
My name is Alan Legori. My family has been renting short-term weekly rentals for 26 years in Barnstable. And personally, one of my family members always checks in every one of our tenants, unless it's a repeat tenant. So we know the people that we're dealing with. We don't just get them over the internet and they send us a check. We use a local realtor who is very good, who does, we do some rentals ourselves, and she does a lot for us. And she screens the people, she gets back to us and gives us the whole history about the people, where they live, how many kids, all that stuff. And we've never had a problem in 26 years with a police report, other than me calling the police on one of my tenants. But we've never had neighbors complain or anything like that. I see where we're going here, and I just want to say that I think, number one, we've got to use caution going forward here, because there's a lot of ramifications if we make mistakes. I, I believe that it, it can, down the line, can hurt the economy of the Cape. Cape Cod has always been a summer vacation home, and there's people that can't afford to go in a hotel when they have six children. They need to rent a home. And, and as somebody also spoke, some people can't afford a whole week. I, I do only weeks, but I can understand where some people might come with six kids and, and want to come during the middle of the week. So I guess all I'm saying is that it, it's been a part of the community for as long as I've been here, as long as my uncle has been here. He's the one that got me into it. He's a retired real estate agent and dentist now, and I know a lot of friends and people own businesses. I have three friends that have restaurants in town, and, and that mix is all part of Cape Cod, you know, people coming here and renting a home. Some people go to a hotel and they choose a hotel, but the people that choose a hotel are going to eat out every day. The people that don't choose a hotel are going to shop at Lampert's Market and, and stuff like that, and they're going to do more cooking at home. They're going to support, you know, by us renting, we support landscapers, as people have said, cleaning ladies. What I pay my cleaning girls is tremendous. But all these people make money or make an income off of our seasonal rentals. So I just think we should be cautious about what we do, and anything that we do do, if we're going to make people upgrade smoke detectors, then we should make everybody across the board upgrade them, because it's not fair to single out one particular group. If it's going to be a, a code change, it should be for everybody. And last, I think that... I lost my notes, sorry. Maybe if I put these on, that would help. Oh, as far as putting in, I, I heard rumors that they want to get something in by May, May 1st of this year. I, I think that's rushing it. I don't think we have the data. And, and I think that would be pushing it too fa, fast, because I think most of the people that rent have already entered into contracts. I know most of my contracts come in in October, November, December. I've already committed, and if there has to be some kind of change to the contract, and my contracts are all by the law, I get my Board of Health permit, that's the occupancy that the Board of Health says we can have, that's all we have. But I think there's some people that might be entered into contracts, and they can't change those contracts, or they'll open themselves up to a... change those contracts, or they'll open themselves up to a real liability. That's all. I think we need to take caution and really look at every avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
My name is Bonnie Bridges. I'm from Harwich, and we were the first town, I'm speaking for Sustainable Practices. We were the first town on the Cape to pass the municipal bottle ban. And there was a lot of resistance at first by some of our selectmen, thinking that there would be a problem with the cranberry festival. He looked into it and found out that there are substitutes for single-use plastic bottles, and that's what we really have to think about on the Cape. We are drowning in plastic. There's no place, even as a country, there's no place to put plastic anymore. And we really owe it to our children to ban plastic, single-use plastic bottles.
Anyone else? As Jim Crocker used to say, going once, going twice, going three times. All in favor of ending public comment? Indicate by saying aye. Thank you very much. Okay, so what we're going to do now is have response to public comment. And I just want to point out, the reason that we're not going to have it during the workshop is that people have been coming to the subcommittee work and expressing their opinions, and they keep coming in, and we keep working with all those. And I'm going to take... So that's the reason why, that the councilors have never heard from the subcommittee to this point. So we, the councilors, want to know about that. And at this time, I'd also point out that new stuff keeps coming in. This is so complicated, so you think you take one step forward and then two steps back. So this week, we've been dealing with legal, looking at the reality of conflict of interest, potential conflict of interest. So if there's any councilor who's a realtor who does short-term rentals, it's conflict of interest. If you have them right next door, possibly we, as a councilor, could be hit with conflict of interest. So I'm hoping there's going to be enough people left on the council when we're done this, that we're going to have a voting quorum. So it's that complicated. So thank you very much, and we're going to open it up for public comment. Response, response. We've already done that one, we've done that, and we did it very well. Thank you very much. Is it hot in here, or is it me? Yeah, it's hot. Okay. What size? We'll try to open the window again. Okay, all right. Let's try it again. Thank you. Councilor Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. I do want everyone here to know that I have read all of the emails I've received. I have also read, more than once, the list of points coming from the Civic Association. Full disclosure to the Civic Association, I will say that I find some of your points to be incredibly restrictive, and I only hope that tonight, after hearing some of the people in this room speak, you have a better recognition of what some of those rules could mean for some of the people in the room. And you know, it strikes me, as I thank Anne Rolland for coming twice now to speak to us, and also to Jeremiah Hagerty for now coming to speak to us. And I hope for the two of you, you know, for Anne, that there's a recognition that Jeremiah, and Kelly, and Jillian, and Jamie, this is your daughter and husband, and that, you know, short-term rentals has enabled these young professionals, younger Cape Coders, to remain here and make housing affordable for them, which I think is very important. I think there's another group in our population that's fairly vulnerable, which are our seniors who very often are on fixed and limited incomes. And as their property values, their properties they've bought 50 and 60 years ago have gone up, it's harder and harder for them to pay their real estate taxes. I don't think as many of them are on the front end of short-term rentals as the younger people. But I know for me, in an elder-law practice, it's something I talk to seniors about every day in terms of affordability, you know, because for a lot of them, their only other option is perhaps a reverse mortgage, or having to leave their home and move in with a child or something like that. So I just ask for everyone in the room to just be mindful of, you know, for those of you who are more well-established, for whom finances and residing on Cape Cod is not a problem, be mindful of all the other people who still struggle to remain here year-round and live and work every day, including our young people, including a lot of our senior population. So thanks, everyone, for your comments, and I want you to know that I listen and read everything you send and appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Councilor Cullen, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond. Thank you. I just wanted to respond to a couple of the comments that were made, and I'll reserve most of my comments for, during the workshop, but I think when people take the time to come in, we can respond. Let's see here. I wanted to say, first of all, Jillian, I know you came to the meeting that we had on Tuesday of last week, and I appreciated your input very much, and I understand your situation. And I want to point out that we did address, I don't know if you were in the room or if you'd already left, we did address the large event thing by putting in a mechanism for a permit or whatever, so we could do that. I also wanted to point out, and many people mentioned that the regulation should be the same for B&Bs and lodging houses as they would be for Airbnbs, and that's something I said over and over and over and over and over again in that meeting. So I just want to make sure that it's, and I think Martin McNeil mentioned that, too, that we, I believe, had a very lively and productive meeting that night, and we addressed a lot of concerns, I think with fresh eyes, about, from both sides of the aisle. I'll agree with Councilor Shaughnessy that I find the Civic Association suggestions to be very strict, and I think that we can manage a lot of the angst in the public through this kind of zoning ordinance and general ordinance, hand-in-glove approach that we're taking. I also want to talk about the, what it takes to change a general ordinance, which is basically two reads and a majority vote on the council. So it's a pretty flexible way to change things, should it not meet the needs of the community, and we'll be paying attention to that. So it's not like something that's carved in stone and put in front of the town hall, and it takes, you know, 400 years to change it if it's not working. I think as far as public input is concerned, I've been on the council now, this is in my ninth year, and this has probably been one of the most circumspect and open committees with regard to public comment. I was chair before Councilor Schnepp took over. We had public comment at every single meeting. She's had public comment at the meetings that she has chaired since. We've received, we've been inundated in letters on both sides of the aisle on this. I call people back, I email people back. I've been trying to be a conduit of information between the two sides so that both sides can understand where the others are going. So I think, you know, we've, we heard in the very beginning, hurry up, we're suffering. And then we hurried up, and then everybody said, whoa, pump the brakes. So we kind of have whiplash up here. But what we want to do is put something on the books so that the people who are feeling the pressure in the neighborhoods feel some relief and have some credibility, or we have credibility in your eyes. So the whole idea of the general ordinance is to give people a mechanism by which they can complain, and that complaint is answered, and everybody has the right to the quiet enjoyment of their property and can enjoy it, after all. So that's where we are on it, that's where I am personally on it. We'll go through the workshop, and hopefully, a lot of fears will be allayed. I think what happens is when these situations escalate, the way this one has, concerns get kind of ginned up that, quite frankly, might be unfounded in some levels, and might be genuine, begin as genuine concerns, but then maybe the process isn't understood by which we can change things, or whatever. So please know you can always reach out to me, I read everything, I'll call you back. I'm famous for that. And we can continue now, I guess, with more comments. Thank you. Also, oh, just Kelly, good job, you know? Good job, girlfriend.[1167.41][1167.41](LAUGHING).
Thank you, Councilor. Vice President Raprasetti, thank you.
Remember, rhymes with spaghetti. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify one thing. What's being proposed is a change to our zoning ordinance, and zoning changes require a two-thirds vote of this council, which is a vote of nine. And if it's a negative vote and turned down, it cannot be revisited for two years. So that's something to be mindful of. Also, the subcommittee has not worked in isolation. Their meetings have been videotaped. Of Counselor Schnepp, who chairs that committee, requested that they be videotaped, and they have been videotaped and can be viewed on the town's website, right on the front page. You go for Channel 18, video on demand, look on your town console, and you can look at the meetings to bring you up to speed. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you. Councilor Starr.
Good evening, everybody. First, I'd like to thank everybody for sharing their perspectives on the short-term rentals. There are lots of different constellations of how people use them, how people have used them historically. So I just, I've written down all the comments, and thank you. Nothing's written in stone yet, I want you to know that. Okay. We're still thinking. For, let's see, I wanted to speak to Carla, Suzanne, Mary, and Bonnie from Sustainable Practices. I'm the liaison to the Infrastructure and Energy Committee, and we are looking into the municipal plastic water, municipal plastic bottle ban. We're looking into it. But, you know, I know we're a really big town, we're sort of late to the party, since we're behind a little bit, but there are a lot of moving parts. So we're starting, the committee is starting to put together, if we start taking water away, we have to think about where we're going to put water, and how we're going to get it there, and water refill stations, and who's going to take care of them, and there are a lot, so we're moving. I just want you to know that. I wanted to talk to Anne Rolland, who's asking about alternative sewage systems. I don't have to say anymore, because Mr. Crocker, Z. Crocker's here, and we're going to hear more about that later in the meeting. So thank you.
Councilor Schnepp.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to all who have come out tonight and expressed your opinions. I know some of you have been to several meetings, and again, that's a large commitment to bring your view forward. And you have been heard, as several councilors have mentioned, we have received your emails. Most of us are reading all of them, and we will continue to request your feedback. A week from Thursday, a week from tonight, we will be having another meeting of the zoning and regulatory subcommittee. We will be having it in this room. We had, we kind of ran out of space in the regular meeting space, so we'll be meeting here, I believe, at 5:30 PM. We will be taking the feedback that we received from the workshop to incorporate into the draft regulations. Again, this is an open process, but we have moved to what is more of the legislative process, where the folks that you've elected to create your laws are going to be in deliberation to come up with the best product for how we want to move forward with this issue. And as been pointed out by Councilor Cullen, it can be changed. So please be patient with us as we put this together, and you will continue to have many opportunities to comment along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, Council President. I, too, appreciate all the input that has gone into our evaluations, our subcommittee meetings, as well as this meeting. You are contributing to make it a better product in the end. I should also mention that regarding the expensive undertaking of putting in a new septic system, I should say that the county does have a low-interest loan operated by Barnstable County, and it is, it's very helpful in helping the lift that it takes to install a new septic system. Their information is on the Barnstable County website, a five-interest loan for 20 years. And I should also explain that the planning department's webpage has helpful information on short-term rentals as we go through this process. They have kept up with facts relating to the short-term rentals and have posted the recent draft, which is a work in progress, so to keep up with that information. It's out there in the public's domain. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? So getting ready to close response to public comment, I'm just going to point out one thing. On the Titanic, everybody that was on the Titanic had bought a ticket to be on that Titanic. And it was unfortunate that they came up to something bigger than the ship itself. It is a proven fact that had they kept their calm and all worked together, every single soul could have fit in a configuration of those lifeboats. Everybody could have been saved that wasn't killed in the immediate damage to the ship. So we're kind of all in the same ship, and we're going to keep working together, and it's our goal to serve this town and the greatest number of people in this room. So thank you. With that, I'm going to ask if there's any other councilors. No? No? Okay. Oh, yes, please.
Mr. President, I did want to address a comment made by Mr. Teague. I'm not sure if he's still here, but he did serve on the planning board, I want to thank him for his service. But he mentioned something about accessory dwelling units. And I think, I think that it's time for this community to look at the accessory dwelling unit by right, which might very well put an end to the need for this short-term rental. If you're allowed to, by right, rent out your main house and live in your in-law apartment, if you will, which used to be the norm back in the 50s, then perhaps you wouldn't need to supplement your income to remaining your house and age in place. So I'm hoping that the zoning and regulatory review committee can look at the accessory dwelling unit by right, subsequent to this discussion on SDRs. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. All those in favor of closing response to public comment, indicate by saying aye. Thank you. If we could now, the town manager, Mr. Mark Els, Communications. The councilors need to... Please, please exit the council chambers, please, if you're leaving. Oh, could you sign in now? Thank you.
I'm not going to speak again.
An honest man, good.
I was just thinking of Rowan and Martin Laffin in The Hook.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you could take your conversation outside, we'd appreciate it.[1673.41][1673.41](LAUGHING).
You too, take care.[1675.41][1675.41](LAUGHING).
Are you going to put up my... That power?
Again, if you could take your conversations outside, we appreciate it. Time for managers' communications. Mr. Mark Els, thank you.
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. This is my report for the period of February 7th through February 27th. I will start, though, with just a note that, just so you know, we have been... I will start, though, with just a note that, just so you know, we have been communicating and posting information as it becomes available through our Public Health Department. And as our emergency response official, our Chief of Police, has been working with the Cape Cod Hospital staff, with the fire chiefs, with the superintendent, with our health and county health, and within our own police department, to be ready in the event that we have concerns extending beyond certainly the cautionary concerns that we have now relevant to the coronavirus. And they're actually holding a meeting tomorrow at the PD for our health and safety officials. So we take these matters very seriously. Public health and safety is one of our priorities always, and we will do all we can to prepare in the event that some level of response is required. We are proceeding with the tasks in the Budget Action Calendar for FY '21 as scheduled. The FY '21 Capital Budget and the 21 to 25 Capital Improvement Plan has been submitted to the Town Council and is posted on the town's website. So hopefully, our viewing public, if they would like, can go in. It's right up on the homepage, go down a little bit on the left side. It links you through our Finance Department to the documents. Town Council will conduct their first reading of the FY '21 Capital Budget orders on March 5th, 2020, and a second reading beginning March 19th, 2020. That's when actual discussions relevant to the proposed capital budget begins. Mark Milne and I will do a brief summary of the FY '21 Capital Improvement Budget when items are taken up under new business. So on March 5th, we'll do that. So therefore, on March 19th, you can get right into business relevant to orders, the orders for our capital improvement program. Town Manager's Rate Hearing is scheduled for March 10th at 10:00 AM here at Town Hall. It's been posted on our website if the public would like to view those proposed changes. These are fiscal year fees. They include water pollution control, water supply, solid waste, and under our Recreation Department. So typically, I will hold the hearing. It'll be a public hearing in this room. We will take comment at that time. And then I hold open public comment for a set period of time. I usually consult with the Director of Finance to see how long before we need to establish those. It's typically no longer than 30 days. Our Department of Public Works, and I actually have a presentation up on the board to go over this issue. Thank you, Lynn. Our Department of Public Works continues their efforts of public water supply well rehabilitation at the Mary Dunn 4 well site and installation of test wells on numerous sites across Barnstable, including the Fish and Wildlife property, immediately abutting the Hyannis Water System. We continue this effort and plan to complete these efforts by the spring of 2020. Upon receipt of test well data, we plan to commence an evaluation of each test site, prioritize the sites relative to future potential water supply well viability, and then provide Town Council with an update on the findings of that evaluation. Public Works has also continued meeting with other water purveyors in Barnstable as we look comprehensively at water management in our community. What I wanted to do, and some of what I'll present here is redundant, I will go through this because I'm beginning to receive a lot of inquiries about what are you doing? And why are you looking throughout the town of Barnstable for future potential water supplies? And this isn't coming from our districts, water districts, fire districts. These are questions that I'm beginning to receive from our residents. So I thought I'd just take a moment and go through a little background on this. And I believe that moving forward in the future, we will all receive many questions on this. And I think that there will be many presentations and discussions, not unlike comprehensive wastewater management and many other issues that we are tasked with managing. You know, quick picture, the big tan areas are where our water comes from, and the little black dots are where our public water supply wells are. Now, when you pull out the Great Marsh, about half our town is where we draw our drinking water from. So you've got a 50/50 chance that you live and, you know, walk and, you know, recreate on top of drinking water. We have five districts in town, well, really, we have four districts. And then we have the Village of Hyannis. That's not really a district. That is the water supply, that is serviced by the Water Supply Division, which is part of the Town of Barnstable's Department of Public Works. But we have Centerville, Osterville, Marston's Mills, that's the green lines you see. The yellow on the far left is Catuit. Head north is West Barnstable. They don't have public water. Barnstable Village, which is, you know, a deep red, and then blue is Hyannis. So the town acquired a 100-year-old water system back in 2005 from a private company that serves basically the Village of Hyannis. And our goal was to provide commercial and residential properties in Hyannis area with safe, efficient, and effective means of obtaining drinking water and fire protection services. And really, that is kind of at the core of why people are asking, why are you in West Barnstable looking for water, DPW? Well, number one, it's the Town of Barnstable, and it's the Department of Public Works that serves the Town of Barnstable. And when you kind of come down to real simple science, you don't draw your drinking water from under where your densest population is. Yet that's what had been done by a private company that we acquired, knowing that we had challenges both in quality and quantity. And we thought that it would be best serving our public, both the public that lives here and the public that visits here and the businesses that exist here, if the municipality managed this issue. Because as I stated earlier when I opened, relevant to another matter, our priority is public safety and health and safety. So who better than to manage this deteriorated asset? It's no longer a deteriorated asset. Water Supply Division and our existing wells, so when you look over in Hyannis, you can see clusters of wells. They're primarily on the northeast side of Hyannis, and then down in the southern area, down in the Hyannis Port area. So you can see those clusters. Probably familiar with some of the names because we've been in for capital projects for most of these wells at this point. There's been a lot of discussion about potential future well site on the Fish and Wildlife parcel. That's that big green area, top right. And then the general area where we're looking to put a test well to see what type of quantity and quality we can get. You can see Yarmouth's wells aren't very far to the east. And then you can see the cluster of the Mary Dunn wells up high and the Mar wells down in the lower right corner. The airport well's kind of in the middle of the map. What we're doing right now are the A through G sites. So they're really along the middle moraine, the higher moraine, you know, of our town. And it's, you can see, you know, Central A jump, you know, jump north to B, north of 6A to B. That orange line through the middle is Route 6, rather. I'm sorry, not 6A. Start to head west, C and D, D being the West Barnstable Conservation Area. E and F coming back east, and then finally, G, way over to the right is the Fish and Wildlife parcel. We completely, and the questions I'm getting is, well, why would you put it on conservation? You can't do that. That would require Article 97 disposition. So why are you on conservation looking? Every single place in this community where we look to put water supply, and conversely, effluent discharge, for that matter, is complicated. There is no easy place to try to do this in our community. Yet it is needed. It is essential in our community. So all of these areas, A through G, we have been out to or will be going out to in the very near future. And we're using a small drilling rig. I think it's a two-and-a-half-inch well. Yeah. Using existing roads and paths. Each site is staked and flagged. Each site was evaluated for sensitive receptors, so we don't go in there and disturb something. We've done this presentation before our Conservation Commission. Using a tract-mounted sonic or two-and-a-half-inch drill rig, and we commenced drilling already and will be done by April. Preceding this, concurrent with it, and hereforward, we've been meeting with our other water purveyors in the Town of Barnstable. I attended the kickoff meeting, and our DPW has led the remainder of discussions and will do so as we move forward. So we're talking with them. They know what we're doing. They know what our intent is here. I truly believe we will be having discussions, maybe even within this calendar year, about how we can partner more closely with water suppliers in our community. We've already got interconnects with the Armith, with COMM, and I believe there's other interconnects between some of the other water systems that don't fall under our Department of Public Works Water Supply Division. So I think it's really important that our public know that we're doing this. This is departing from the, okay, I'm in a district over here and that's our district, so you, why are you here? That is not the relationship that we have with our water purveyors in town. That should not be the mindset of our public. This is the Town of Barnstable. We need to look across our community and not do it in a way that intrudes upon any of the good work that our water purveyors have done to make sure that they have adequate and safe water within their particular areas that they are serving. And we are doing that. We're not just doing that, though, because some people have even said, well, why don't you just abandon wells and just go find that other well site? Well, it takes a long time to do that, quite honestly. Minimum three to five years to do that. And we're in the early stages of that. So we've got a, and I've described this before, but we've got a multi-stage process. We're addressing the existing wells we have, and then we are also looking for future sites. So we've redeveloped already the Straightway 1 well. We're redeveloping Mary Dunn 4 now. We're going to complete the construction of the treatment plant at the Mar fields, hopefully by late summer. That's what we're planning for, you know, by fall, having it online. We're in the process, you've already approved the money for designing and constructing filtration systems for Straightway, Hyannis Port, and our airport wells. And now we're finding new long-term sources of unimpacted water for the DPW Water Supply Division. Now, they primarily manage Hyannis right now. The scope is rapidly broadening. These are going to lead to policy issues that, as a council, we will be bringing these to you and having discussions about. But I expect that hereforward, especially once we get the results of these test wells, we're going to be coming to you and say, okay, here's the prioritized site. You know, we've gone through X number. Here's the ones that don't work. Here's the ones that do. And we would like to discuss a strategy on how to proceed. So I just thought I'd take a moment and give you an update on that. As part of proposed modifications to the drinking water regulations, Massachusetts DEP intends to set a maximum contamination level of 20 parts per trillion for total PFOS. Mass DEP held a series of public hearings around the state to describe the proposed modifications and solicit input. We attended and provided comments at the January 28th, so Barnstable's on record already. I point this out because tomorrow, public comment closes. So, you know, if you have had a chance to review and you would like to make comment, you know, I just want the public to know that they can. One of the comments can be, I haven't had a chance to look at it, so can you give me some more time? This is a huge issue for Cape Cod. It isn't just the Town of Barnstable. So certainly something, and statewide and nationally, it's something that we should all look at. It's worth taking the time to look at. On Wednesday, February 26th, I met with Vineyard Wind to discuss the schedule for their Phase 1 project and remaining authorizations needed from the town to proceed with the Phase 1 project specifically related to construction within roadways. Vineyard Wind anticipated receiving permit approval by November 2020 and commencing Phase 1 construction in the spring of '21. I've had Lynn forward you a PowerPoint presentation. I have no intention of speaking to it. It is not mine. It is Vineyard Wind's. But I think it's important. I've been asked, I know Councilor Beedenbender had asked me, you know, the status, and the status has changed. We were originally hoping that construction would have begun by now. Much of this is linked to their permitting process. So they are available and willing to come before council if you so desire. They are also holding monthly meetings, and I believe the next two are listed in what I forwarded to you. So you'll be able to, if you're interested, to certainly participate there as well. And then Nate Mayo from Vineyard Wind, I believe he was here earlier. I'm not sure if he's sitting out there, but Nate can reach out to you individually and answer any questions that you have. But this is significant. This impacts not only a major project within our roadways and at a particular landing area and, you know, on the north side with a substation, but it impacts our ability to proceed with a sewer installation project. So we've been fortunate to work with DEP and their understanding of this schedule. And we're just going to have to keep all of our, you know, to keep everything moving along as best as we know what this schedule will be. And I'll keep you advised as I proceed with this. Vineyard Wind also, very briefly, though, began discussing some of the draft language in the host community agreement, relevant to what exists in Phase 1, what we've got in there for Phase 2, which needs to be modified slightly. And then really, the focus was on progressing with what they believe they might have the opportunity for a Phase 3. I had already come to council and asked whether, you know, I could proceed with those discussions, and I was authorized to do so. So those are ongoing. As I have information, I'll share it with you. On February 26, 2020, I attended the Cape Cod Community College's Strategic Planning Session at the Plymouth Area Chamber of Commerce. So I was a visitor. It wasn't the one that was scheduled for Barnstable, actually was canceled. So I've, I say this later, but I've asked them to reschedule that because I believe that they are significant in our community, and they should hold a session here in the Town of Barnstable. I believe I attached this as well to what I've sent you today. There's two more scheduled, one on Martha's Vineyard, one on Nantucket. But I spoke with the President, and I followed up with an email communication to him, asking him for a rescheduled session here. You know, and so the planning session was intended to define the vision and key priorities for the immediate future and would be based on an analysis of critical needs and opportunities for the communities they serve. It was very interesting as a visitor up there because I was the only person from the Cape. And they are very aggressively pursuing a Cape Cod Community College's presence. They being the Greater Plymouth area. It's not just the Town of Plymouth. So I was able also, though, to sit and speak with two of the Board of Trustees members and express how important the one right here in Barnstable, well, actually, the two, we've got one down on Main Street as well, are to our community and that we needed to certainly service beyond maybe the traditional area, but refocus on the current area and make sure that we are serving that as well as we possibly can, or they possibly can. I expressed our sincere desire to provide input relative to the critical needs. So what I'll do is hopefully they'll reschedule that, and I will forward that to you. And I think it was very interesting for me to attend and hear what the college was saying, but certainly, I think, back and forth about how we see them fitting into our community, especially we're an educational center. When you look at, you know, how many different... When you look at, you know, how many different sorts of institutions we have here at different levels, it's amazing how many young people are coming to our community to be educated, whether it's a charter school, whether it's school choice, whether it's our kids, whether it's a private school or a religious-based school or a community college. So, it's amazing how many people are coming here to our community. The Town Council appointed the Town Manager as his representative on the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund Board. The Bylaws and Regulations Subcommittee met today. We continue discussions on draft regulations and expect to continue discussions through the first quarter. And thank you, Lynn and Vice President Rab Gersetti. I had an error, I guess, in my link, so now you can actually link the Cape Cod Commission site. Lynn corrected that for me, so, thank you. Interesting meeting. The discussion hasn't focused yet. We've established the bylaws, but not the regulations. The regulations are what will determine how the funds will be distributed to eligible projects. The whole focus today, DEP was there and the trust was there. And the funding will be distributed through the State Revolving Fund, and it will be distributed to DEP-eligible, determined-eligible projects. So, the discussion from the smaller communities was a practical one, and it was, we don't use SRF for our projects. And many of us, for example, Truro, aren't going to put in a wastewater treatment facility. We're going to deal with ours with innovative onsite systems. So, how do we do that and access these funds if we're going to stay in this trust and contribute funds to this trust? So, it was a very interesting conversation, and I would say there were more questions than there were answered questions, though DEP and the trust did a good job. I hope, though, to get to, I'm the chair of the committee, and I hope to get to establishing the regulations. We need to do that because many of us, Barnstable annually has requests, millions and tens of millions of dollars, so this is significant for us. You know, one of the good things to understand is that we will go through the normal SRF process and we'll be eligible for 0% loans as we move forward. And we will typically be considered for principal subsidies. And then, this trust that we are putting these regs for, put together for, is in addition to what we normally receive. So, it won't erode our eligibility or our principal subsidy. That will stand separately and this will be on top of it. And I knew that, but the group understands that. Now, that was a fundamental question, actually, that came into the group today. So, that's a good thing because that can help us to defray a little bit of this cost, which is enormous for all communities that are embarking on trying to deal with nutrient removal. That concludes my update for the Town Council. I'll certainly stay and answer any questions you have, but Dan Santos is going to get up and give you our monthly update on the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. And we have a guest who will also participate in Dan's presentation. So, thank you.
Does any councilors have comments at this point for Town Manager Mark Hells? Councilor Snapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mark, for the report. I'm encouraged by your continued collaboration with the water purveyors in town. And I would like to request some additional information as we move probably through the capital planning process. I'm sure there will be some water issues or, you know. To get some information about what are the costs across our various districts. I mean, I think there's a real issue of equity here and that those who live in the village of Hyannis bear a larger cost for their water, everything.
Why don't I gather that and bring it in through a Town Manager communication?
Sure.
If that's what the Town Council would like. I'll do that.
And in addition to that, it doesn't seem like I ever hear too much in our town about conservation efforts. And I think that we need to balance looking for new sources with conserving the ones we have. And so, to the extent that that also is a conversation that happens in these meetings, that would be great.
I'll do that as well. Talk to Director Santos, and that's kind of built into what we do in the area that we serve, but, you know, we can certainly share that with you. Okay.
Councilor Neary, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. I concur with Councilor Snapp about getting together with the various purveyors in town. That's a huge step in terms of securing future water supplies. I know I ask this every time it comes up. Has there been any indication of what kind of money is in this fund yet in the?
No. Director Millen and I were just talking right now, and DOR is still doing estimates in fairly closed lip, even though there's some, so I.
So, it's accumulating somewhere. We just don't know how much and where it is.
Okay. Yeah, there's some numbers out there, but I think we would feel better if it was firmed up a little bit.
Me too. Thank you.
Councilor Cullen, please.
Yes. I really believe that 4Cs is an absolutely crucial part of Barnstable's future. And I believe that the way it underperforms in its current, in its current form, I was there the other day and I was completely shocked. You could have landed an airplane there. It was like four o'clock in the afternoon. It was, did not remind me of my college days, put it that way. I believe that we, as a council, could reach out to our counterparts from other communities and ask, bubble up from the bottom, what does the future look like? If we think about 4Cs as something that could save, save us from such a seasonal economy, that could really kind of strengthen our shoulder seasons and bring in winter business, just like the HYCC did, I think we have a, I can't imagine anybody ever saying no to that, yet we're getting no. Not from real decision-makers, just, I don't know. I just feel like we need to really amp up the volume on how important education is, that everybody deserves an education that they can afford. That dual enrollment is an absolutely crucial and viable option for a lot of kids that, you know, won't go to Brown University or Cornell or BU or whatever it is. And I think that if we ignore it, we're going to lose it. We're going to, I mean, what's happening in Plymouth, there's a hunger there. Where's our hunger? You know? So, when we talk about our strategic plan, I'm hoping that we can actually loop in some more communication with the school committee, with the superintendent in our strategic plan moving forward and get our heads around how important education is to absolutely everybody. I mean, the Youth Commission is awesome. The Achievers Program has brought education to so many kids that never, ever would have had a chance. And a lot of those free rides go through 4Cs. And this is a population that we're saving. I mean, they, we're saving them. I just can't, it's really a hot-button issue for me right now. And I feel like as a council, we should, we should speak loudly and in a unified voice that we need, we need a strong community college here in this town. It would really help us economically and it would certainly help our population. So, I'm hoping I'll get a lot of, a lot of support on this one.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other questions for Mark right now? And of course, we can always ask him after Dan and his team's presentation, okay? Come on up, Dan.
Evening, Mr. President. Over there. Members of the council. Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. So, I'm just going to give a brief update on what's been going on for the last month or so and what we might see moving ahead. So, the big, the big issue, as has been for a few months, is the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan submission to the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office, or the MEPA Office that occurred in January. Last Friday, we met with MEPA. They have a site visit as part of their environmental notification forms. And they come down and we gave them a briefing. Their team, from team from Public Works, answered their questions and spent the afternoon with them. That went very well. And key upcoming dates for the environmental notification form in this process, comments are due to MEPA on March 2nd. And they will provide a decision to the town on March 12th. And then, that decision basically is how this environmental impact report process will go, what they're going to be required for us to look at. And so, we'll know better next month when I brief you as to what we need to do relative to that and how long that might take. We are continuing with public outreach and will continue to do that. We met with the Indian Pond Association in February. We're going to be meeting with the Barnstable Association for Recreational Shell Fishing, or bars, on March 3rd. And we're planning a meeting with the Ostful Men's Club on April 1st. One of the requests MEPA had was, they wanted to see conceptual layout of the entire plan, basically a cartoon, if you will, of the entire plan. They felt more comfortable with that, so that's one thing we're working on right now, where we're kind of putting pipes in all the roads and where they might go. And it is very conceptual, and its purpose right now is really to just satisfy their need to see that as part of this submission. And we continue our preliminary design on projects that you all have funded over the last couple of years. Just a reminder, obviously, this is our three-phase plan, the red being Phase One, which we are in at this time. And our next steps will be to continue public outreach as requested. We're talking with the Town Manager about our staffing needs and requests. Obviously, to implement a billion-dollar project, you need resources beyond just the funds for the projects. We need to administer contracts, do designs, and at this point, our approach is to preliminary design in-house, using consultants to do final designs, and then, having construction administration and inspection in-house with consultant support. And work at the Water Pollution Control Facility will be done primarily by consultants because that's more specific related to the treatment process. We'll continue the preliminary design of traditional projects and our permitting efforts in the, both the traditional projects as well as the non-traditional or alternative projects. We continue to meet on a regular basis with Vineyard Wind regarding the Strawberry Hill Road Project and their Phase Two. And those items will continue. And I'm now going to, I'd like to introduce Z Crocker, the Executive Director of the Barnstable Clean Water Coalition, who we've been working with hand-in-hand really for the past several years. Z and his group have done a wonderful, wonderful job kind of getting involved in this process with the town. And one of the things they're focusing on primarily is the Marson-Smills River system, but also the use of alternative septic systems. As I've spoken to you in the past, we are very interested in relying on alternative septic systems, particularly out in the western part of the community, to hopefully minimize the need for that Phase Three, or at least great portions of Phase Three, at significant cost savings to residents of the town of Barnstable. And the Clean Water Coalition with Z's leadership is looking at a very robust and significant trial of alternative septic systems in our community, and we will continue working with them. So, I'm going to turn it over to Z and he'll tell you all about that program that he has ongoing. Thank you. And I'm around for questions if there are any.
Thank you, Dan. And thank you, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, and councilors. Really appreciate your time. Been a busy night, so I'll try to run through this, a very complicated issue fairly quickly. What I'm hoping we'll do at Mr. Hebert's suggestion is have a workshop at a later date. We had last Tuesday about a 50-minute presentation with the Board of Health. It's online. It's on tape. I encourage anybody who wasn't there. President Hebert was there. Counselor Starr also there. So, thank you for the time. I'll run through it quickly. I think we know the background. I'm not going to spend but a second on this. Eighty-five percent of the problem, Title V septic systems. The current alternative septic systems really don't perform at a very high level. That's been one of the critical things we've been trying to look at, understand and figure out what that means and what we can do about it. So, the target is to get systems that can be 80 to 90% plus successful. We have one, there's a couple out there, but we have one we're excited about. That's the one we're going to trial, and that's what we'll talk about today. I want to point out that in the trial that we're going to talk about, we're going to look at phosphorus, we're going to look at contaminants of emerging concern. It's not just nitrogen, even though we know that's the critical area, that's the area that we're concerned primarily for legal and other reasons. So, we're looking at a neighborhood-scale project, 30 to 50 systems clustered in one area and impaired water body. And we really want to prove this out at scale, at this scale, and we're going to talk about exactly why. It's key to do this to get approval for the system from MSDEP. And it's key, we think, in the end, because I think we're going to be looking at something that's a really significant alternative and a very cost-effective alternative for the town. So, the team, who's on the team? In addition to myself and on our team, we've got the EPA Officer Research and Development. We've got the US Geological Survey. We have MSDEP, the Massachusetts Alternative Septic System Test Center, Clean Two, that's the manufacturer, the Nature Conservancy in Region One. They all came and presented last Tuesday, and they're all going to come again at the workshop that we're going to have. We looked at four different areas within the Three Bays watershed, and this was just to pick an area where we felt we could target and understand exactly what to look for. So, we're working with, in this case, the US Geological Survey. We drilled wells. I gave you all pictures of our newsletter. You can see on the cover the drilling well that EPA brought from Ada, Oklahoma, for this purpose, for this express purpose. This is a complicated chart that only scientists will be able to explain, but the key thing you want to know here is, in each well, we drilled 80 feet and looked at the characteristics of the water within that area. The area that came up looking most successful potentially for this project is the Shubal Pond area. On the right, there is a map of an area around Shubal Pond where EPA and USGS will put a network of wells, at least 10 wells. EPA and USGS, Region One, are committed to spending up to half a million dollars on this project at no cost to the town or to my organization. Piloting for DEP approval takes about two years for an IA system. Fifteen systems have to be in and tested over that period of time. Provisional use, that is another three years, and you need a total of 53 systems to get this done. So, we're in a hurry to get this moving along. Currently, the best systems are only approved for 19 milligrams. That's not that great, okay? Down the street here, we get the six of the systems we're going to show you, can get to around seven. The systems that we're looking at, that we're excited about, have been installed in the Vineyard mainly, also at the Joint Base Test Center, and also in Falmouth. This is your traditional septic tank that we all have, that we all use right now. A Title V system works just like this. We can all see what the characteristics are. And here is the Nitro wastewater treatment system, all underground. What's different here is the tank in the middle has two different sections. One is a section on the left, the aeration chamber, which has in it limestone and an air pump. It's the only working part of this, of this system is an air pump. Runs 24/7, takes about the power of a light bulb. The liquid effluent is then controlled on a pH basis. That's important for nitrification. In order to denitrify, you actually have to nitrify first. The wastewater then flows into the denitrification chamber that has wood chips in it. Wood chips remarkably provide a carbon source for a certain kind of bacteria to respirate nitrogen. They turn it into gas. The atmosphere is 78% nitrogen. It's harmless. That gas goes out through your house vent, just like your current house vent exists today. It's all existing infrastructure, which is what we're excited about. So, we're using the existing infrastructure of our homes. It's all gravity-based. This is one of the key characteristics. We wanted to make sure we were able to have what happens if we have a hurricane, what happens if the power goes out, what are we going to do? These systems will continue to operate as Title V systems if there's no power. You won't denitrify, but it's not like you can't use the system, can't take a shower, can't use your bathroom. We think the lifespan is going to be 30 to 40 years. We think the price is going to be very competitive. For the first iteration of this, which we're looking to fund, and we're not going to talk a lot about funding today, but our organization has agreed to provide about half a million dollars in funding as Phase One of this. We're looking for partnerships with the town. We think there's other competitive grant money that's going to be available to do this. We think in this community at first, we'd like to do the first 40 systems essentially at no cost to the neighborhood, so we can prove the system. at no cost to the neighborhood, so we can prove the system out. We've got to work on that. What's the cost at that low scale? Probably around $30,000 per fully new system. So compared to $87,000 a parcel for municipal treatment, not bad, even at a low scale. O and M, we think operation and maintenance is going to be probably in the $500 to $800 a year, but that's part of what we want to prove. The system's modular. We have real-time monitoring, that's one of the keys, is that this system can be live monitored for, how is that pressure pump doing, what's the pressure in the pump, and what's the temperature in the system? Temperature has a lot to do with performance in this case. And fail-safe, because you have an existing Title V system as part of this system, so there's backup. This is a little bit confusing, but take a second to look at it, because this is really critical. If we look at the greenish bars, that's the influent, that's going, what's going into the system right now? So I think what's key here, and the reason we started to look at a network of these systems, the reason why this is important, is because no two systems are alike. And so when we start to look at, why do we want to do this? It's because, take a three-bedroom home on Cape Cod, it's an older couple, or it's a family of six, or it's 13 seasonal workers, and you can see that in that chart right there. And what you can see happen is that the influent, the green, is going down. So this shows all the installations, they've been around a little bit, about two years, and you can see the bar there on the bottom is 10 parts of nitrogen. And we can see that we're getting really remarkably good numbers, even with really large inputs. And I'd point out that the state says that the average input for all systems, all systems, is actually 45. Take a look at where 40 is on that line. There's only one thing that's actually below 40 on that entire line right there, in terms of input. So it's really not reality. The difference is, the characteristics are actually quite challenging in terms of performance. So when we look at this and we get down to the averages, we're looking at a median discharge of about seven parts, we're looking at median reduction of about 90 percent. Like I said, the treatment plant down the street's getting around six. Pretty exciting opportunity, really, if you look at it. Conclusions? Expansion of the municipal treatment system is critical, we know we're going to have to do it, and we're not saying this is going to be any kind of a opportunity to replace that system, but it is an opportunity to do things more quickly, perhaps be less disruptive in some areas, and really accelerate the process in a meaningful way, and perhaps a very, very meaningful way, not just for here, but also for the Cape. So I'll take questions, you guys have been pretty busy tonight, and you've got a lot more to do. Thank you.
Counselors, any questions? Counselor Starr, please.
Good evening. Thank you for the presentation. My question is about the town, how can you see the town supporting this effort? Because it's important to us in the long run, so can we invest in it now, or what would... I'm not offering anymore.
There are opportunities for grant funds, there is the municipality, municipal vulnerability program of funding, which I was unaware actually has a whole area for septic systems. There could be an opportunity to do this kind of funding. We're right now working with the Nature Conservancy, we're going to meet with Mark Milne, we're going to certainly meet with Karen to talk about the legal aspects of exactly how to do this. I think the critical thing is, how do we fund Phase One? We want to get 40 of these systems in, because we need 53 systems operating for three years to get general approval, we have to reach that point, so we can't do it overnight. Maybe we can accelerate that. So I'm going to put that in the TB Continued category, Counselor Starr, but I think there are great things that the town can do, and we'll be talking individually about how we might be able to move that forward.
Thank you. Vice President Rap Crisetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Z., for coming out and for your lengthy presentation before the Board of Health, and I encourage everybody to watch that presentation, it goes into a lot more depth. But I think this is exciting, especially for this area of town where it's not slated to be sued, to look at the alternatives. It's around a pond, the issues that we've been having with the cyanobacteria around the ponds. And I applaud your organization for stepping up and wanting to partner on something like this. I think these IA systems can go a long way to reducing that billion-dollar bill for our wastewater treatment going forward, so thank you, and I look forward to more of it happening. And when you're done, I just want to ask Dan a couple of questions.
Counselor Levec, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Z., for your presentation. Obviously, this is a little redundant for myself, because you were kind enough to meet with me and brief me about this, and I was actually just talking to a constituent in the Shubal Pond area about this project coming up. And so my question is, obviously, very excited, very thankful for this opportunity, for this to happen in Marston, as well as, obviously, in my precincts. What is the best way to get the word out that this is happening? And people who are very, obviously, very concerned about Shubal Pond, and the same issues happening last summer, happening this summer, and that we are addressing it, we are, we hear their voice, so to speak, what's the best way? Is there a way to maybe do an outreach? Obviously, I'm more than willing to work with anything that you would propose.
We're going to try to do a series of meetings, community meetings, so we can talk to the community about exactly what's going on. We're already talking to a smaller group of constituents within the community to make sure that we can start to spread the word. We really accelerated some of these conversations, like the Board of Health conversation and this conversation tonight, so even though we're not, you know, fully 100 percent ready to go and have an answer to every question, we wanted to start talking about it, just so we can understand, what is the community thinking? What are the concerns? What are people going to think about, want to knock on their door and say, gee, we want to replace your system, we want to put something like this in the ground, what do you think? And then we've got to figure out, great, we want to put a lot of them in, and how do we pay for that? And how might that work? So I think over time, there may be an opportunity to look at this as a betterment, potentially. John Norman, the Chairman of the Board of Health, actually said, "I think the town ought to allow a tax holiday for a period of time for people if they're willing to put these systems in." Okay? Now, interesting idea. I didn't prop that one, believe me, but I was glad to hear it. Who knows? We've got to look at it against the incredible costs of municipal treatment. I think we have to look at all options, and we will.
Counselor Beedenbender, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. Just one quick question, I think you said you had 500 million towards this, sorry, sorry.
I wish I did.
Extra zero. 500,000, yeah, right, problem solved. You have 500,000, what is the total cost estimate for the 40 units?
So just call it, you know, call it 30,000 a clip, and you can get to a number really quickly, without really thinking about exactly what the numbers are going to be, and let's throw in the half a million dollars for the monitoring wells, and then it's going to cost a lot of money to monitor all these things. We're going to monitor all this very intensively, at great expense, both the individual systems as well as the in-ground wells. And part of what I'm hoping we can get is so much strong information that maybe we don't have to wait three years, maybe we can start to expand this a little bit more. But it's complicated, and there's a lot of things we need to get answers to. So we're going to find the money, you're going to help us. Thank you.
Counselor Bogan, please.
Not a question. Good evening, Z. I just wanted to note that it looked like Casey, who didn't want to come up before, was trying to get your attention in response to Counselor Levec's question about how to get the word out.
Casey Danhauser.
Hi, Casey Danhauser, Barnstable Clean Water Coalition. I finished booking this space for a public meeting today at the Osprey Village Library, so word will be going out to residents in that neighborhood very soon.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Casey. Anybody else?
Thank you very much, Mr. Crocker, and well done.
Mr. President.
Great. Dan, I think there's another question for you, Dan. Vice President Rap Crisetti, please.
Hi, Dan. Any update on Joint Base Cape Cod?
They are planning to have a meeting shortly on the base with the group that looked at this in Washington. They're coming up to the base to discuss this, and hopefully in March, they're going to make a decision, but that's the best information I have right now.
Okay, March is next week, that's good. And also, could you provide me with your update?
Of course.
Thank you.
Counselor Beedenbender, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Just one question on your last slide, there was the bullet of continuing public outreach as requested, kind of thing, and we had talked a while back that it would be, I thought the intent was to have a proactive public outreach policy, so I'm just wondering where we are in the development of timing, when we're going to reach out to communities, sort of what that structure is, and I don't expect you to necessarily have that in place now, but what is the plan, and when do you expect to have that in place?
Well, our preliminary thinking is that we will go out into the community when we have conceptual designs. So, and we're working on those now, but as soon as we get into specifics in neighborhoods where we have concepts, our intent is to have meetings, discuss these, put forth alternatives, and get input. And so that's how we're intending to approach that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions of the town manager's report? All counselors in favor of closing the town manager's communications signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Vice President Rap Crisetti, if you could act on the minutes, please.
I'd like to offer for acceptance, the town council meeting minutes of February 6, 2020 is presented.
All in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. Thank you. Now we're going to open up for communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. Vice President Rap Crisetti, please.
As liaison to the Historical Commission, I just want to make everyone aware that the Commission is accepting nominations for the town of Barnstable's 2020 Preservation Project Award and 2020 Preservation Service Award. And they do have a flyer attached to their website, and if you need more information, you can call Aaron Logan at the Historical Commission office at 508-862-4787. If you've seen a project in town that you're impressed with the way the historical building was preserved or restored, and you want to nominate that project, this is the time to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
I just want to mention an exciting new program, which will come into the town of Barnstable, hopefully by June, having to do with the Council on Aging, and it's called the Neighbor-to-Neighbor Program. Currently exists in two Cape communities, Chatham and Falmouth. This is going to serve all seven villages. Essentially, what it is, is a concierge service for a membership fee. It's for people over the age of 60. You can become a member of Barnstable Neighbor-to-Neighbor. There will be financial assistance for those who cannot afford it, but essentially, it is a volunteer network that can provide transportation, light housekeeping, yard tasks, assistance with technology, smart devices, also socialization, in addition to the transportation, for example, getting to doctor's appointments. So I think it's a very important program, all the volunteers will be Cory-checked, but I just want to let you guys know that this is coming, and I think it's going to be a really great thing for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Snapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. As liaison to the Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee, CFAC, I wanted to let everyone know that the final CIP report that comes out of that committee will be available, I believe, next week. The committee's done a lot of great work, and I recommend that you read that as a companion to the CIP book that is also now in your mailboxes. I'd also like to point out that we do have an election on March 3rd, next Tuesday, and that the voting for precincts 10 and 12 has moved, it has moved since, I think, 2018, but just as a reminder, voting is at the Seventh Day Adventist Church on Route 28, not at the former school. And just a quick question to our Assistant Town Clerk, when does early voting end? That's been happening at the town hall.
It started February the 24th and it ends on Friday the 28th. So it's 8:30 to 4:30 tomorrow will be the end of it.
Any other... Okay, I do want to announce that I am forming the Manager's Contract Review Committee, and the following individual counselors will be participating in that. Vice President Rap Crisetti, Eric Steinheilber, Deborah Daguan, Counselor Cullum, and Counselor Levec. So they will be meeting to review his contract. Anyone else? Okay, so now what we're going to have is the council workshop on short-term rental, the draft and the regulations. Thank you very much. So I'm going to, you're going to oversee this, the report, is that correct, Counselor Snapp? I want to take this moment to really thank the subcommittee and the staff that have worked tirelessly on this. We appreciate all your hard work. Thank you very much. Counselor Snapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to provide a little context to this workshop tonight. As you know, this is just an opportunity for counselors to hear from staff on the work that has been done, the recommendations from the subcommittee on the ordinances that are being proposed, and an opportunity for us to engage in questions and dialogue with staff and among ourselves. We will not be taking any votes tonight, so there won't be any motions, so just so we know how this is going to proceed. For purposes of time, I'd like to just go through the presentation, the recommendation, before we enter into any questions or dialogue, and not interrupt the presentation. You have copies of both the presentation and the draft ordinances, if you need to make notes during the presentation. I'd like to now turn over the presentation to our Assistant Town Manager, Andy Kleiberg.
Thank you. Assistant Town Manager Andy Kleiberg, I'm joined here this evening with our Town Attorney Karen Nobur, Director of Plaid Development Elizabeth Jenkins, and our Building Commissioner Brian Florence. Appreciate your time this evening. I also appreciate you putting the pressure of my boss's contract directly before this presentation, Mr. President. Thank you. So, we are, the task at hand, short-term rentals. We just last week had about a four-hour meeting on this and reviewing it, I realized I sped through this in the hopes of getting to the business of the day, so I do think it's important for us to take a little bit of time and set the stage. So that's what I'm going to attempt to do, and then I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth to kind of go through the draft regulations. So, short-term rental law, Chapter 337 of the Acts of 2018, revised Mass General law, Chapter 64G, Section 3A, to include short-term rentals among the list of established subject to the local excise tax. The short-term rental law defines short-term rental as "an owner-occupied, tenant-occupied, or non-owner-occupied property, including but not limited to an apartment, house, cottage, condominium, or furnished accommodation that is not a hotel, motel, lodging house, or bed-and-breakfast establishment," establishment, where, one, at least one room or unit is rented to an occupant or sub-occupant, and, two, all accommodations are reserved in advance, provided, however, that a private owner occupies property shall be considered a single unit if leased or rented as such." I promise that this won't be death by PowerPoint. Two hours for my comments tops. Short-term rentals. Weekly rentals are a type of short-term rental. Anything less than 30 days, anything less than a month is captured. So although vacation rentals have always been a customary use in our community, I think we heard a lot of that tonight, rentals that last less than a month are now part of what the state has defined as short-term rentals. Governor Baker signed the law into effect January of 2019. The tax started being applied July of 2019. The Department of Revenue sent the first data out to municipalities, January of 2020. So we got our first data set about a month ago. Currently, there are 601 short-term rentals in Barnstable according to that DOR data. The Town Zoning Council Regulatory Subcommittee was tasked with working on this issue, and town staff is supporting that effort. Draft regulations include a general ordinance regulating short-term rentals and a zoning clarification defining the short-term rentals. Short-term rentals are not currently allowed or prohibited anywhere in the town. The term did not exist when the current zoning was established. Short-term rentals are being operated everywhere in town, and that is a public concern. Some key facts. Again, there are 601 registered short-term rentals according to that DOR data. The vast majority of those rentals are owned by a single owner. Less than 5% of short-term rental owners have more than one house. Only 1% of those short-term rental owners have more than two houses. Estimate of actual short-term rentals in Barnstable, we believe to be closer to 900 at this time, and we have seen those numbers decrease since the tax went into effect in July of last year. This is a map of the data that we have. This is a breakdown by village of where the short-term rentals in Barnstable currently exist. Hyannis has 196, Centerville 145, Ostriville 89, Barnstable Village 76, Katuut 49, The Mills 25, and West Barnstable 21. Our outreach to date, we've gone to every village and civic association, starting last October, Centerville, Ostriville Village, West Barnstable, Barnstable Village, Martins Mills Village Association, Greater Civic Association this January. Last town council, we had a citizen group submit a proposal for consideration that had some draft zoning considerations that we've, we've delved into. We had all of the civic associations meet with the town manager, February 14, last Friday. Again, you heard from Deb Crow earlier today, we have their updated input. We received a substantial amount of input at last Thursday's zoning regulatory subcommittee. That meeting scheduled for an hour lasted about four hours. I think that's great. Again, tonight, you heard from every possible person, so I think this is good. What we, what we heard resoundingly from those civic associations and others were that they want a deliberate, methodical, measured data, measured data gathering process. They want to ensure that we listen to all input and do not rush the process. This is what I alluded to that we have, and I believe all of you have been provided this. This is the list Deb Crow presented on behalf of those village associations. If you'll allow me, I will go ahead and read through these bullets. I think that perhaps later, when we get into the workshop, this will be a slide that we return to. They ask that all short-term rentals should be registered and regulated. Non-owner-occupied short-term rentals are not allowed in residential-only zones. Only occupied short-term rentals would be allowed. Traditional Cape Cod rentals with occupancy and length of stay limits identified below. Town licenses should be required for any short-term rental. Those found operating without a license would be fined and on subsequent offenses shut down. Initially, the number of town licenses should be capped at 800 with a quota for each village. Short-term rentals should have owners that live in the property for a minimum of three months of the year. Occupancy limits currently in our regulations should be enforced to protect neighborhoods and our water supply. We believe the town's current regulations should be followed, which are two adult occupants in each of the first two bedrooms and one in each bedroom after that, regardless of the sewer status. A computerized system should be implemented to record all concerns about a property, whether rental or not, so that there is one central place for our residents' concerns and for our town to have employees to access that information about a property. Properties with multiple complaints should have to respond to authorities with fines and, if applicable, loss of their STR license. Short-term rentals should be for a minimum of a week. Short-term rentals should have someone local available 24/7 to be contacted regarding the property. A butter should be notified on how to contact this person. We agree with the notifications for large parties, but should include all, not just those that involve a caterer. There should be a moratorium on additional short-term rental licenses above the initial 800 proposed above until one year after the computerized system is operational and the town's ability to enforce regulations are determined. So, we do have some data. I just showed you the chart where those 600 units are. We do have, it's all public information, and we have spent a significant amount of time with some of the people that were here today. I know I have gone through all the data that we have. We started looking at some of the proposed things from the civic associations and from what was presented at the last town council meeting by Barnstable Watch. The particular zoning areas that they noted in their proposed zoning were RF1, RG, and RC. Those are shown on this map. This is the map of where those 600 are currently located. This is just to give you the ability to be informed. If you do decide to ban in zones, a ban in of short-term rentals in those zones would eliminate 159 current short-term rentals, about 26% of what's currently operating. We do have other residential zones. I think these were selected because of the 13 or 14 zones that we have. There was no specific reference to anything to do with rentals in those, in our zone, current zoning. But some of our other residential, you know, as we start talking about these other items such as water quality, maybe we should be looking at other zones. So we looked at the data RD1. That's a residential zone. You know, we've certainly had the Lakewood Quocket folks in here talking, being very concerned about their water quality. If you want to look at implementing anything there, there's another 64 short-term rentals currently operating there. That's another 10%. Director Santos started going down the path of alternative systems out in The Mills, you know, what we call Phase 3. If we wanted to look out at Phase 3, well, we're not going to be doing sewer-ing for probably at least 20 years, there's another 95 short-term rentals out there. That's 16%. And the reason I, I really wanted to go through these scenarios were regardless of what the policymakers decide on where to possibly ban these, it still is only, if you add all of those up, it's only half of the short-term rentals. So we need to regulate, what's left is mostly Hyannis, but we firmly believe that we need to regulate wherever we're going to allow these. Again, I have all the data. If you want to get into it, we can pull up the actual spreadsheets. I have it by village, by zoning. We've looked at residents about, well, all of our residents, the data town-wide, about 54% are owned by non-residents. About 2/3 of the short-term rentals in these coastal areas are not full-time Barnstable residents. It seems clear that simply allowing or banning short-term rentals across the board is problematic. Similarly, restricting to family-only rentals is problematic. What's been proposed is a general ordinance, or we've had much discussion about general ordinance versus zoning. We think that it's a hand-in-glove endeavor. Enforcement timelines, fines, license removals, et cetera, in that zone, in the general ordinance will give enforcement folks the tools that they need. I think Counselor Cullum already discussed the notion, a lot of what we were hearing about being locked in, and that's not the case, and you've already clarified that, so I won't belabor that point. These are the common ground areas. I think we all, or everyone that we've heard agrees that we should know where all these short-term rentals are, that we want to ensure, ensure the safety of those homes, its occupants, and the neighbors, and that we want to regulate all community concerns. So the zoning regulatory committee has reviewed in depth the details required to regulate those common ground issues, and the first draft ordinance is what's being presented this evening. And again, we think we need these wherever short-term rentals end up being allowed in town. Then we moved on to the larger policy issues that really need to be discussed, and those seem to fall in the, in the caps or limits category, and I think we'll certainly get into those, whether it's caps on number of licenses per individual or town-wide, or minimum night stays, or putting any type of restriction on those stays. And obviously, those will change as that's debated further. So with that, I will turn it over to Elizabeth Jenkins, who will start down the road of where our group is at with the draft regulations.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. Before I go into the ordinance, I'd just like to note, as, as I believe the council already stated, the ordinance that was under consideration at the zoning and regulatory committee is online on the short-term rental information page, as well as the presentation that was given at that meeting. Well, after this meeting, we'll immediately update those drafts with the ones that are being presented tonight. So the approach that town staff has worked with the zoning and regulatory committee on, on short-term rental regulations, as Assistant Town Manager Clyburn says, involves two parts. A general ordinance to license and regulate short-term rentals, as well as a zoning clarification to address that short-term rentals are permitted use in the town of Barnstable. Just a quick disclaimer before I go into it, these are, are working drafts of regulations. Typically, when we bring things to councils and subcommittees, they come very fully formed. I think as a, as a commitment to sort of working this out together with the community and the council, what you are seeing are draft regulations. They haven't been through a sort of a comprehensive legal review, so we anticipate that things will likely change as a result of that, but want to make sure that we are sort of nailing down all those policy questions and getting them right as we enter into the final stage of that drafting. So I'm just going to quickly walk through, again, the general ordinance and zoning ordinance on sort of a high level in terms of what the, what they contain. So the general ordinance to regulate short-term rentals first starts with definitions. It's good to be all on the same page. Most pertinent in those, in those definitions are the definition of a short-term rental, which is a residential dwelling or any portion of a dwelling rented out through the use of advanced reservations for a fee for a period of not more than 31 consecutive calendar days. And I'll just note that all of the definitions in the ordinance are based on the definitions. In Mass General Law, the Act to Regulate Short-Term Rentals for Consistency, that's not a requirement. We don't have to, to adopt the definitions of the state, but generally, we think it's best practice to import those definitions into our local ordinance. So I'll, so everyone's on the same page, whether they're dealing with, again, local requirements for licensing short-term rentals or state requirements for registering them. The general ordinance requires all short-term rentals to be licensed with the town of Barnstable. The license would require, would require an owner to, an owner of a property that's going to be used as a short-term rental to file an application, to pay a fee. There'd be a renewal period for that license. It would be one license, one owner, for one short-term rental. One of the things that, that staff heard fairly consistently when going out to civic associations and when reviewing ordinances was the importance of accountability for those who were choosing to operate short-term rentals. So the draft regulations include a proposal that all operators of short-term rentals identify a contact person that would be available within one hour of contact by, by either the town or an emergency services personnel, and then that contact person would be available 24/7. And then the name of that contact person would be made available both within the rental and online, so neighbors would have it should issues arise. Another thing that we heard, again, fairly consistently at civic associations was speaking in favor of neighbor notices when these short-term rentals are licensed. So the draft does include a requirement to issue good neighbor notices. You know, having all of these regulations are excellent, but they have to be well-advertised so folks know, again, whether they're, they're hosting a short-term rental, they live next to a short-term rental, or they're a guest in short-term rental, that we in Barnstable do have certain expectations of behavior in short-term rentals. So the good neighbor, so all of that information would be made available in the good neighbor notices. They would go out to operators when, of course, they get the license, and then the operators would be required to post those regulations in each short-term rental. And because we don't want people picking and choosing, what they put in those notices, the town of Barnstable would provide templates for, for all of that information. The proposed general ordinance includes a, a suite of regulations to address the most common community concerns that we've heard, really to address potential impacts to neighboring properties. Highlights in the regulation are occupancy requirements for short-term rentals, two people per bedroom plus two, requirements for trash removal, once, that trash be removed once per occupancy or once per week, whichever is greater. Parking restrictions, no parking on, no parking on the, no parking on your front yard, basically. And then prohibitions on large events. I will note that, that, that the draft has been updated since the one that was originally published, not with specific language, but with, with an idea that there would be accommodation for some type of one, one-day license for large events with the owner's consent, so that the owner knows that that's happening on their property. Reference was made to making sure we cite current noise and refuse requirements. That is in the ordinance, perhaps indirectly, we could maybe call it out more directly, but some of these, some of these regulations are more stringent than what's in our code now. The idea being, again, people, you know, may not be familiar with our, our, our community, and, and these extra protections are there for our neighbors. I'm going to let Brian speak quickly to inspections and...
Thank you, Mr. President. Town council members, again, taking a high level on this. I don't want to bore you with the, with the details, but we're, we had recommended to the subcommittee that the, these units get inspected every, at the onset of them and whenever they renew, so it would be a two-year cycle. We would look at life safety things. Your, your presentation just says smoke and CO detectors, but it's, it's more, there's more to it than that. We'd be checking egresses in and out, making sure that the stairs going and out of the buildings are safe, making sure that egress windows are appropriate and those types of things. So we'd be looking at a host of things that are life safety-oriented. Thank you, no problem. I'm, I'm good. So, as the subcommittee knows, we went back and forth quite a bit about why a local ordinance overzoning. Really, the, the key is that it's, it takes a lot less, it's not just easy to amend, easier to amend, it's also easier to enforce in terms of timing. We can, we can revoke a license, we can do things like that a lot faster than we can get through an appellate process in the courts if it becomes necessary. So there's a process that we recommended for complaints, for submitting complaints, and then for our staff to address, and it includes timelines. We recommended violations and penalties. The, the penalty gives us a set of tools, as you've heard earlier from Assistant Town Manager Clyburn, and that's really for various levels of offenses. For example, one, it would be ticketing, right? So a ticketing would be for a non-life safety issue, a less egregious offense, going into it knowing that tickets, as you heard me at the subcommittee saying, tickets aren't a magic bullet. They're, they're a tool, and there's an appropriate place for them, but just writing a ticket doesn't, doesn't do a whole lot in the enforcement world. The next one would be written notices. Those are for more serious violations, but not necessarily life safety. They could end up as a court action. And then most importantly, as I said a moment ago, for the most egregious offenses, we are, we have the ability to bring somebody in before a licensing hearing and for a possible verification of that license. Again, it's a faster-paced process than going through zoning, zoning appellate process. Again, it's a faster-paced process than going through zoning appellate process. There would be a local hearing, we'd have a hearings officer here in town. And then, as legal wants me to say, there's always the judicial process if any of these other things fail, so. Thank you.
So, that's an overview of, again, sort of a high-level overview, not everything in the ordinance, of the general ordinance that would require licensure and regulations of short-term rentals. You know, it still leaves us with the issue of the ambiguity within our zoning on short-term rentals. So, as a companion to the general ordinance, there's a proposal to clarify our zoning, to identify short-term rentals as a permitted use in lawful residential dwelling units within town. And then, you know, as we started this process, one of our key goals was to make it very clear to residents what they can and can't do with their homes. We feel towards that end, the clarification of short-term rentals versus the existing provisions that are in our ordinance related to renting of rooms and renting of rooms to lodgers is necessary. So, we would be defining renting rooms and renting rooms to lodgers as well, as part of that zoning clarification. So, again, that's an overview of sort of what we consider the consensus regulations that were presented to the zoning and regulatory committee by staff. Last Thursday, staff was asked by the zoning and regulatory committee to facilitate a conversation on other regulatory options for short-term rentals. Really, we put those into two categories, caps on licenses and limits on stays. So, just briefly, the sort of issue, the purpose, I think, behind caps would be to potentially reduce ownership of multiple residential units by single owners for the prime purpose of using them as short-term rentals. You know, obviously, there probably would be some nuance involved. We heard from a lot of people tonight who have family properties, you know, multiple properties who were in their family, so perhaps something that would want to be addressed. So, the subcommittee, again, was presented with potential recommendations to cap the number of licenses issued to owners. Another option in that column being capping the number of licenses in total issued in the town of Barnstable, something that could happen in the future if there was concern about proliferation of short-term rentals and protection of our housing stock. The second category, again, limits on stays, the, you know, the potential issue here being limiting the intensity of a short-term rental use. Town staff provided a spectrum of different regulatory options, ranging from bans on short-term rentals, limiting the number of weeks per year a short-term rental could be rented, minimum night stays, perhaps in varying, perhaps that vary, and then really know, on the other end of the spectrum, no additional limits on short-term rentals, which is what I think most Cape communities are doing at this point. We did have a conversation about limits by location, also limits by residency. You know, there are some sort of underlying legal concerns there, and sort of looking at our zoning map, you know, zoning necessarily, our zoning districts aren't necessarily responsive, I think, to some of the concerns that we're hearing. So, that would be an additional challenge should consideration for limits by location happening. So, again, that's the overview of our process today. I will conclude, and again, we've heard very loudly that this process shouldn't, you know, shouldn't be rushed and should be deliberate, but for the purpose of, again, looking at how this could potentially move forward. We have our presentation tonight, there is a March 5 zoning and regulatory subcommittee meeting where this issue could be taken up again. Both of these issues, both general ordinance and the zoning ordinance, need two readings in front of council. So, a first reading could take place March 19th. For a zoning ordinance, it does require a recommendation of the planning board at a public hearing, so that would be an additional step in the process exclusive to the zoning update. And then, both would have, both general and zoning ordinances would have to come back to town council at a public hearing for a final vote.
Thank you very much, staff. Excellent job. I'd like to now turn to Councilor Cullum to discuss the recommendations that the subcommittee made as a result of our meeting on last Thursday.
So, we kind of just decided to pull it together and get a recommendation to the council in the end, especially on these policy questions. I don't know if you could go back a slide for me? Oh, yeah. So, the policy considerations, we spoke about the caps on licenses and the main concern, there were two main concerns, I think, that we discussed. One was the potential for proliferation of one particular entity to come and buy a bunch of properties and kind of take all the air out of the room. So, the other would be, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. Anyway, let's just go back to the recommendation. At the end of the discussion, we decided, I put forth a motion actually to cap the license per owner as opposed to, in general, because we only have partial data now. So, the motion was to cap it at two licenses per person, meaning you could live in your rental and have a short-term rental out of it, or live in your home and have a short-term rental out of it. You could live in your home and have two separate short-term rentals. So, we felt like there was some flexibility. And I also felt it was really pertinent to remind everyone that we're speaking to that we're not restricting ownership in Barnstable, restricting the use of short-term, for short-term rentals. So, the other concern about that was the housing stock, that if we allowed someone to come in and buy, or an entity to come in and buy, you know, 10 properties, particularly in an area where the housing rates are lower, like in Hyannis or whatever, then we take a lot of that kind of housing availability, which is so limited anyway, out of the hands of Barnstable residents and kind of turn the town into more of a business. So, that passed, I believe, three to two, the caps on licenses, if I recall, and I believe it was Councilor Peedenbender and Councilor Schnepp that voted no and may want to speak to why, or how they feel about it now, after some consideration. The second thing, policy question that we examined was the limits on stays. And we've had a lot of conversations about this, you know, in the many months that we've been meeting. And, you know, primarily, when we think about, you know, the HYCC, for instance, and the hockey tournaments that go there, you know, families come and spend two nights here, three nights here for, you know, the lobster pot, or, you know, other things that we do in town like that. We just didn't feel, as a committee, that it was prudent to put a limit on the length of stay at this point. And, you know, I'll put an umbrella over all of it, saying that we do have six months of data and that's it. And I think we're all committed to revisiting, to see what works and what doesn't work in the future. But for now, we felt like we might really negatively affect the economy of the town and put an undue burden on families that have short-term rentals, like the ones who spoke tonight, or on families who want a vacation here, because the vacationing has just changed. You know, the long weekend has become the new week-long vacation. And so, we just felt like there'd be some flexibility there for that. Now, and I feel really comfortable with these two things, and I'll explain why, because we have an ordinance that is probably more strict than any ordinance on Cape that's in front of us, and I know it's not the final, final, final yet, but it's a very strict ordinance that really, I think, respects neighborhoods. And the one caveat is that we must put in in place, and I know that we're developing it simultaneously and that staff is waiting for the final order on what we're really regulating and what the ordinance looks like, but we have to have a mechanism in place by which people can complain and their complaints can be heard, and we can deliver on it and we can revoke a license if there's a short-term rental torturing a neighborhood. And I think that when we look at the concerns of the civic associations that we have heard over and over and over again, and the concerns of the short-term rental owners or property managers, I think that we come to kind of a nice agreement with these, with these two recommendations on policy. And, you know, it's been a lot of conversation that got us to this point. The limits on stays was unanimous, I should mention, but, you know, as always, it's just our job in a committee to bring it to, you know, the full council for deliberation and conversation, and then finally, hopefully, to pass something. So, that's kind of my take on what happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cullum. Before I turn the gavel back to our council president, do any of the other committee members want to comment on our recommendations? Councilor Peedenbender?
Just to follow up on Councilor Cullum's comments, I'm in full agreement in regards to, this is how the conversation sort of unfolded. I was hesitant on the caps on licenses because of a couple of things. One is the lack of data that we have in general, but as I thought about it, it doesn't seem, when it comes to per owner, the lack of data is less problematic than if we're doing an in-total cap. The other reason for my hesitancy on the cap on licenses is because you're trying to, you know, you're weighing all these different, you know, perspectives and trying to protect neighborhoods, but also protect people's, you know, ability to, you know, help pay the nut, if you will. But another voice that hasn't been brought up, which was also part of my, you know, struggle with trying to come up with a number here, is that, for example, you have someone who, like a developer who owns a bunch of units that are, they're long-term. And so, now he's got turnover and on March, he's ready to rent out those units. So, let's say he's got 20 units, and he's got a unit that comes free, and it's free on March 1st, but the new people can't move in until March 15th, and he will end up renting those two weeks out through an STR to help him make the numbers work. And so, I just wanted to give that more thought and throw that out there as just something to consider. I mean, you know, you have to weigh it in totality with everything else, but that was one of the things that I felt I needed to give a little bit more thought to before I came to a determination on caps on licenses. So, that's where I was at on that one. And limits on stays, I just want to reiterate, you know, while, you know, while it may seem tempting, you know, vacation has changed completely, and there are a lot of families that can't afford to go away for a week. So, I think that we really hurt, we really hurt people who want to visit, and we hurt those folks who are using those funds to help, you know, fund their own needs by limiting stays. So, you know, that's just an additional support to what you were saying.
Thank you. Councilor Starr or Gort? You're good?
I was just going to speak to the, at the number of units per owner. You know, you'd mentioned two. The other option was to have an owner-occupied unit plus a freestanding, so that was the other option. You could limit it to two, or you could have a owner-occupied unit and then one separate house somewhere else in town. So, yeah, well, but that was, that was, that was, you know, that's what we were going back and forth about. Okay. And I guess that's it. I'll stop there.
Councilor Clark, are you good? Okay.
Before I turn it back, I too will make a comment on why I voted not in favor of the ban on the cap. Was, again, a kind of a lack of complete knowledge on what the ownership scenarios are. Given our definition of what owner is, it could be people in a trust, and there could be more than, you know, you could be part of a couple of different arrangements. But I do have a concern that if we allow too many short-term rentals per owner, we could be having an impact on our year-round housing. So, I actually could be persuaded to do a ban that might be two or three, so. Councilor Peedenbender?
Just to follow up to that, so Province Town has complete, like, do-whatever-you-want, right? They have no regulations. Province Town is gutted now because they are suffering, because there is no place for anybody to go, there's no place they can afford, they have no inventory. So, that is a real consequence that can happen with sort of unfettered short-term rentals. So, just a cautionary tale from a real-life example on the Cape.
Okay.
So, again, thanks to the committee and the staff and the great work we're doing. So, any other councilors would like to make any comments or questions, please? Councilor Neary, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question, maybe to Brian. Do we, our current ordinances, and bear with me for not knowing, do we have, are the ordinances that are in place now have noise complaints built in? Do we have any ordinance currently in the town of Barnstable that maybe we just haven't had the method of enforcing?
So, the answer is yes, there is noise ordinance, there is sanitary code ordinances, so you can't throw trash all over the place, and those sorts of things. Is there a particular place that you're asking about? Because we haven't had a noise complaint on a short-term rental that I'm aware of. There may have been one or two in the Health Department, but I don't have any knowledge of that.
That's kind of where I'm going with this. I just, STR, there has to be a method. I agree with that. There has to be a method in terms of, if you're aggrieved by a neighbor, there has to be a method to reach out to the town. But when I start to see ordinances come into play, it'd be more applicable, I guess, to a zoning change, but I just think about, my next question would be, if something that resembles what we're talking about here, what kind of staff requirements are going to be required for this? What kind of, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, because it's going to unfold as, you know, when we walk through the door, these things are going to unfold. What are the, I'm reading things about computer systems that, you know, we're going to have to match up with. My opinion is that you've got some majors, you've got, obviously, Airbnb, you've got HomeAway, you've got VRBO, you've got Vacation by Owner, you've got these type of things. And where the tax collection part of it, the 14 and a half percent on rentals, is kind of new. We can't even get an amount that's in the pot yet, that may or may not be distributed at some point. So, I just fear, you know, on the folks that we're talking, all I had is, I wrote caution. Ultimately, what I'm hearing is, we need to be cautious about this. And to concur with Councilor Cullum, it was, we got a rush into this, we have to make a decision, and now everything is, you know, slowed down. And I agree with that. We have to, we have to kind of be thoughtful about this. But ordinances like zoning create ancillary costs that we're going to have to bear as this thing goes forward. So, I just, with that said, I think ultimately, we need to determine, should we do these things? We need to try to assess a cost to what it's going to run as this program rolls out and goes forward. Because obviously, it sounds to me like we're talking about staffing, we're talking about enforcement by your department, or enforcement that comes from the police department, and who's going to compile these records, and who's going to determine how it, you know, how we educate the whole program and process. So, those are my thoughts. I just, that's where my head is always kind of driving towards the cost, how are we going to pay for this thing as it goes? Are the fees going to be so substantial, and that's how we're going to justify the cost? And then, are we shooting ourselves in the foot, because now it becomes, you know, tremendous application fees, tremendous burden on adding things to your house? It was funny, part of Andy's presentation indicated that once this stuff comes above board, a lot of the stuff's going to go under the rug. So, you know, people will be doing it kind of on their own, on the handshake, and the, you know, as the people, as they're passing the keys to the people, so.
And we've seen that.
Yeah.
I mean, you look at Charleston, South Carolina. Right out the gate, ban it all, and it didn't work.
Yeah.
People are going to do it, they've done it here, 40, 50, you know better than I, I'm a Washington. I apologize, yes. So, we are looking very closely at what staff requirements, and I think we'll be ready. I don't think that we've had a robust conversation about what the fees should be, and there's certainly a balancing act between if you charge too much, then people aren't going to register, but you need an adequate fee to cover your costs, recovery to enforcement. So, yes, yes, on every item you've said, we're very concerned, and we're working the budgets appropriately to bring forward.
Thank you. Councilor Cullum, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up one thing that's been kind of a steady theme throughout our meetings in the subcommittee, which is utilizing the GIS database that we have. Because one of the most frustrating things for me is when I hear that we're not reaching Because one of the most frustrating things for me is when I hear that we're not reaching our constituents and their messages aren't reaching us. And so there was an example from Amherst that Gloria McPherson brought forward that showed on the GIS database all different parts of the town interacting on one screen. So if there had been a noise complaint, it was there. If the fire department had been out there, it was there. If the police had been there, it was there. And so really, that, I think that kind of like, that's intern work, right? And that can just be, that database can just be plugged in if there's a permit there for building or whatever, all of it you can see. So I think that right there would take a lot of the guesswork out. We'd have to include the fire departments in that, I think. And I think that that's absolutely crucial. But also, we have to remember that Barnstable, as long as I've lived here and as long as I've lived on Cape Cod, every town I've lived in has been complaint-driven with regard to regulation, every single town. And so when we have looming a billion-dollar sewer project where we need a million dollars in new tax revenue every year to get us across the finish line in 30 years, if we start talking about spending over 100 grand annually on some sort of software that's going to look at VRBO and, you know, Airbnb and tell us where they're lying to us for pennies, it's like, you know, what is the expression, you're tripping over quarters chasing nickels down the street or whatever? It just doesn't make any sort of fiscal sense. So these are one of the things that we're going to have, some of the things we're going to have to look at. It will require more staff, you know, for inspection. But I think that if we hire 2.5 FTEs, it really alleviates a lot of stress in the community. And that's what I want to see, is the neighborhoods feel some relief. Because the people who have been complaining say they've been complaining ad nauseam. On the other hand, we have six complaints logged. So, you know, it doesn't make sense to me. Clearly, the complaints are not being heard. So we need to be able to do that. And then I just wanted to ask one question, if I may. Can we talk a little bit about the fee structure and whether or not you need three violations to have your license revoked? Because that was something that was brought up at public comment.
No, you don't. So the fee structure, the fee structure would have, is, that we recommend is the same as for our current rental program, so that we're not chasing people away. It's a $90 fee. Ours is currently, it's $90 annually. And, I'm sorry, was it the second part of your question there?
Do you need to have three strikes and you're out? Or can your license be revoked immediately?
No, it depends on how egregious the matter is, right? So if somebody left a trash can in a front yard, we're going to write them a ticket and that'll, you know, we'll look at them, make sure they don't do, don't have more issues. And if they do, are habitual and there are issues, then we can look at that. But if somebody, you know, sets the front entrance on fire because they had a blowout party, then, you know, that's where we revoke their license. They have a hearing if they want to appeal that. And then whatever the decision of the hearings officer is, is what it is. And if it's a revocation, it's a revocation.
Excellent. Can I have one more follow-up and then I'll stop? I guess, okay. So I also wanted to mention that I spent a lot of time at the last meeting mentioning that all of our rental regulations need to be alike across the board. And I just want to make sure that that's heard by this board especially, because the provision on last Tuesday's meeting was one of requiring after one year, an upgrade for the fire alarm so that you're hardwired, which is an additional cost to the homeowner or the STR owner. And we don't require that in lodging houses or bed and breakfasts. So I think we need to be very vigilant that we're being fair when we entertain this new platform and all of our kind of legislation and be very circumspect about that. So that's it. Thank you very much.
May I respond to that? So it's kind of hard to put those, there's like apples and oranges, bed and breakfast and lodging houses. If they're a start, well, now they have to put, they have to put in an alarm panel, a low-voltage alarm system that's much more significant cost than a smoke detector. I heard you loud and clear last week, and as I recall, that was actually voted to not be recommended.
Vice President Rep. Crissetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to the committee. I know this has not been easy to do. You know, one thing that strikes me is that the occupancy, I think, should be more aligned with our current occupancy. I'm not sure where it came that two people are allowed for every bedroom, because that's completely different of our current regulations, which someone stated, you know, the Chapter 59 comprehensive occupancy. So the first two bedrooms, you've got two people, and subsequent ones, it's a single person. The exemption to that is children, grandchildren, and foster children. So, and I'm not sure, frankly, I don't know how you regulate that, other than the license would have to say, this home is licensed to, for six occupants, period, or whatever it is, depending on that calculation. So how did it come up that it's across the board, two people?
I think that's exactly how it ended up landing that way. I mean, if you look at Board of Health regulations and you were to base it on septic, that's a per-square footage. And we quickly, doing what-if scenarios, saw, you know, you've got a 2,500-square-foot home with four bedrooms, you could have 20 people in there based on border. So we don't want to look at that. And we look closely at the 2-2-1-1 that you alluded to. The issue there, and we could certainly, again, this is all under development, unlimited children under the age of 12. And the enforcement of that, that's on top of. So let's say you had four bedrooms and two plus two plus one plus one, and you're, so you're landing at two, four, six. You could have six kids, you could have 12 kids, you could have, I don't know how, it really, that was the debate we were having, is do we want to be doing that? Do we want to be out there inspecting how many kids versus adults? Or do you set a best practice that is being utilized elsewhere and you say it's two persons per bedroom plus two? That's where we landed on that. I think it was a compromised.
You know, even that's going to be difficult to enforce, how many people are, end up at the house. And I don't think it's the-
I don't think we wanted to try and get into, are you 12 or are you 14?
Well, I think the license should state specifically for adults to this house and so many children. You know, I think everybody should be provided a bed. And I don't think it should be assumed that, you know, that the homeowner's going to have inflatables and, because that can be problematic. So I'm just, I don't know what the solution is, but I'm not sure. And I'm hearing some concerns about two plus two plus two plus two, excluding the bedroom. So that has me concerned. The other thing, when you talk about noise, because this is a complaint-driven proposal, is let's spell out our noise ordinance and say that there's a $300 fine for violation of the noise ordinance. I don't know when the last time that was ever imposed, but we do have a noise ordinance under the Chapter 170, and I think it should be, I think it should be spelled out in the Let's see, and I think it's $200 each offense, not 300, but I think the occupancy had my concern. I also don't want to see the livelihood and the need to do this for property owners taken away. So I want to maintain that, but I also want to respect, you know, the neighborhood. There's nothing that says anything about signage, and this is a bit of a pet pee for me, but I've already seen it crop up throughout the community, people posting. And I know, you know, it's a, and our right to be able to post signs on private property. But with regards to everybody putting vacation rental, rent me, all over the place, I think there should be some sign ordinance to eliminate all of that. I think it's great that you're notifying the abutters, because again, everybody will know who's renting the house and kind of keep a neighborhood watch on, oh, I didn't know that was an Airbnb. Oh, okay, that's why I'm seeing different cars there. So I think it's great that you're having a butter notification so that they're aware and can even have the number at ready should there be a complaint. So I think that's a good part of this. But I'm going to listen to my fellow councilors and their input and see what happens.
Commissioner Florence.
Thank you. So the comprehensive occupancy regulation, it's the law of unintended consequences, right? So you've got a sanitation code that says, for Board of Health purposes, this is what you can have. And it's 150 people per square foot in a dwelling of habitable space, except for bedrooms. And that's 75 for the first person and 50 feet after that. I don't want to go crazy with the numbers here, but in effect, if you have a 20-by-20 bedroom, under the sanitation rules and regulations, you're allowed to have eight people in that bedroom. So what Assistant Administrator Clyburn was saying is, yeah, under the real regulations, you can have as many as 30 people in a 2,500-square-foot house. And there's nothing that says there's anything wrong with that. Septic systems are not based on numbers of people. Septic systems are based on numbers of bedrooms. So there's a misunderstanding about what occupancy levels are at. And this comprehensive occupancy ordinance we have, half of it was defeated in court. So I'm not sure that the other half of it would survive if we get challenged doing this. We set, we talked to the, and recommended to the subcommittee that you consider two persons per bedroom and then plus two if somebody's going to sleep on a pull-out couch or something along those lines, because we don't trust the comprehensive occupancy. All right, so that's why I thought. Noise, noise, it sounds so easy to fix. It does. It sounds very easy to fix. But our noise ordinance is specific to music. That's number one. Number two, when you, when you get involved in noise, you have to have, you have to have equipment to measure that. So you, the way the EPA regulations read is you can't have more than 10 decibels above ambient. So what is noisy in Hyannis is not the same noise level as you're going to get in Marston's Mills. So you need equipment for that, you need highly-trained people for that. And to regulate the noise ordinance the way it's supposed to, it's almost impossible. And then signage. I'll let Karen speak more on this, but people have rights under real estate law to post their property for rent and for sale. And just whatever you do, please don't put us in a situation where we're getting killed out there by taking signage out and-
We tried. We did have one version of this that said, no on-site advertising.
We did, yeah.
And legal, as many of the things we've suggested, that you can't do that.
Just to follow, that was kind of a rhetorical comment, but anyway. The one last thing was parking, because there's been issues about, and I know our general ordinances do say something about parking in Chapter 170. I think, you know, a certain percentage of the front yard, and I think that should be clarified so that you know where and how many cars you can have on-site on a property.
And we're actually looking at whether the parking requirements should be incorporated into the zoning ordinance. So that's something that's still in play.
I'm sorry, Counselor Bogan, please.
Thank you. I have a few questions. First, I want to make sure I understand the term, and I can direct them either to the panel or other members of the subcommittee. There's no minimum night stay, so I presume that means that you can have a short-term rental for as short as one night?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And that's 365 days a year, correct?
That's correct.
So there was a discussion, remember I said a couple of weeks ago, and I think Ms. Holcomb mentioned it today, about zoning? How do we give credence to existing zoning, given what's being proposed or being considered here? Zoning basically outlines what a municipality, a town, a city wants to look like. And it generally puts businesses, commercial structures, entities in a particular place and says other entities, or single-family homes, should be in another place. And what I'm getting here is, I could live on a cul-de-sac with four homes and someone can come in, or three people can come in and buy the other three homes and treat them as short-term rentals. My neighborhood doesn't look like a single-family neighborhood anymore. Can somebody speak to that?
I can. So what a single-family home is, is decided, is regulated by the building code. And so those buildings, as they're constructed and used, are built and designed as single-family dwellings. So the use of them as more than, more than one family coming, so they have to be still used as a single-family dwelling. If a family can live in there, like your home, at the end of the cul-de-sac, then the other three families would be able to live, even though they're changing from weekend to weekend or week to week or however.
Or day-to-day.
Or day-to-day, yeah. They would still have to be operated as a single-family dwelling.
Let me ask you, I know that the subcommittee had been working with a consultant. Is the proposal here the result of the work with the consultant?
No, it's not. The proposal here was brought forward by staff.
It is very often said, in the legal profession, there's very little original legal thought. So you usually try to, I'll use the word pilfer, from someone else's work that you respect. Was there, were there other, was there another ordinance that you modeled this proposal after?
And I think those two questions go very well together. I think when we began this process, you know, something we heard a lot from councilors in the community is, okay, well, can't we just steal from someone who's, you know, who's doing this really well? You know, there are, this is a national issue. There are a lot of ordinances out there that regulate short-term rentals. There are a lot of communities in Massachusetts that have chosen to regulate short-term rentals. But, you know, I think that our profile, our economic profile, our housing profile is very unique, is very unique in Massachusetts. And the issues that I think our community is looking to address are very unique. So while we certainly, again, looked at ordinances across the country, looked at publications from groups like the American Planning Association, who have put out guidance on this, for the most part, I have to say, the drafting was done by the work of the working group of staff.
So it was not modeled after any particular other set of ordinances?
It was not, that's correct.
The reason I ask that is that very often you can draw conclusions based upon someone else's experience as to what you can expect. Given that you didn't model this after anyone else's ordinances, we don't know what effect this is going to have in one year, three years, five years. Is that fair?
That's true, yeah. Something that I think has been identified and spoken to in a number of cases is the data gap here. And I should add to, amend my answer to your last question, is that sort of as a basis for building this ordinance, we used our existing rental registration ordinance that we have on the books now. Again, that applies to all rentals in the town of Barnstable. So that was sort of the skeleton on which we, which began to build this. This was designed, again, very deliberately to address and provide a clear and streamlined process for short-term rentals that runs parallel to that rental registration requirement.
And, sure, Brian.
And so, and it was designed with the intent of running parallel with our existing rental regulations. So we used the skeleton from that in part to get there.
And if I may, your point's very well received, that that is a problem. And it's a recognized problem, and we have spent considerable time noodling through every scenario of how to get there. I've personally spent two or three hours with Ms. Holcomb and going through the, how can we get there? And I don't think that anyone has said anything is off the table, but we need to, whatever decision is made, make sure that it's made in an informed manner. And the scenario that you outlined is happening now. There are existing, and it has happened for decades, there are people in those type neighborhoods that are operating short-term rentals. That's what the data shows. There are people that, there's 156 of them in that particular zone, that are currently doing that. I don't know how better to state that, you know. I think it was unfortunate, the definition, the net that that casted being 30 days or below. I think this conversation perhaps would have been different if it didn't capture the long, historical, weekly, bi-weekly rentals in our community.
And then just one or two more. I am ever-sensitive to the comments that were made today. And I think that- And I think that we, and I'll say collectively, we, have a tendency to speak in terms of short-term rentals, and we are not necessarily all talking about the same thing.
Absolutely.
So I'm mindful of some of the concerns that were raised this evening. The corollary to that, though, is Vice President Rap Grissette, rhymes with spaghetti, used the word livelihood for those folks. But I'm also concerned about the property values of people who find themselves in a scenario such as I just described. Was there any consideration given to that sort of concern?
Absolutely. And again, that's, that's data that is presented to the committee for their consideration. It's, I don't remember what the, the term you used, something not. I mean, it's not any, yes, the accordion not. It's not a simple solution. I had to look that up. Yeah. But I can tell you, we have listened to everyone's concerns. It's just not, it's not a simple, one-size-fits-all endeavor.
I guess I'll end with just the observation, as I said before, the good results should not be accomplished or sacrificed for the sake of expedience. I think it's more important that we get it right. So I thank you for the work thus far, but I think we've got a lot more work to do.
Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. I want to start by reminding everyone, and I think in this discussion of short-term rentals, short-term renters, I sort of feel like they're being criminalized as a dirty thing, much the same way as Airbnb. I think it's worthy to remind everyone that in the big picture, if the house next door for mine goes up for sale, I have no say in who the new owner is. If the house next door to mine is rented out year-round to tenant, I have no say in who those tenants are. That owner or those tenants could be worse than any short-term renter that I have to put up with for three days, i.e., Sanford and Sons could move in next door. I mean, talking property values, I mean, it could be a nuisance on a daily basis. This person could, you know, do chainsaw carving on the weekends as a hobby. You cannot control that. And so I think it's important to remember in the big picture, while we would all like to have the world's loveliest neighbors with yards maintained to our standards, we don't have that power. So I think in, you know, in talking about short-term rentals, let's not lose sight of the fact that, you know, owner-occupied property, long-term renters, you don't have a lot of say. And I feel like in a lot of the correspondence I've read, there's sort of a glaring hole in that there's this, no recognition that if they're owners of the property, they're all going to be great. You know, people that own and live there are great neighbors. And that's just not the truth, because otherwise, we wouldn't be saying, good fences make better neighbors. So I think, big picture, I think we have to remember that. The other thing that Attorney Nobert touched on, as well as Assistant Town Manager Clyburn, was sort of avoiding litigation. And something that was brought up tonight by several people were sort of things that were going to apply to short-term renters that don't apply to long-term rentals, and don't apply to owners, owner-occupied properties. And I think, just on its face, it is fundamentally unfair to apply to people that are doing short-term rentals standards more stringent than what is applied to others. And whether that has to do with events, or parking, smoke detectors, trash removal, again, your year-round neighbor could be horrible about taking out their trash. So I think, I think it is important to make sure that the same rules sort of apply across the board, because I think if we're setting up scenarios where there's a fundamental discrepancy between the way we treat two sorts of renters, I think we're asking for lawsuits. So I think that is something we should look out for. Another thing I wanted to mention with regards to Mr. McGory's comments tonight about who's been renting for 26 years, you know, if this comes out May 1, and this is going to be true of a lot of people, their contracts are set for the season. I think whatever we do, I think it has to have a delayed inception date of, say, you know, 1/1/2021. Because either that, or we have to grandfather everyone in for the next season, because I think you're going to automatically create just a fallout of issues and potential liabilities for people that are already lined up for the coming season. Another thing I wanted to mention was with regard to the fines. Are those the same fines that are going to apply to people that we find operating with no certificate? I mean, I know they're going to have, obviously, they're going to have to face the Department of Revenue, but it seems to me that people that we find operating with no, you know, just a complete disregard for the regs, I think they should be treated differently. And I don't know what that is, but I don't think, you know, warning one is a slap on the wrist.
They have to be treated differently.
Okay.
Because you can't regulate something that's, for instance, banned. If you ban these, we can't regulate what's banned.
Right.
Same thing, if they don't have a license, we can't go revoke their license.
Exactly.
In the scenario that you mentioned, so it has to be treated differently, absolutely.
So the question is, though, what is that? I mean, am I missing? Have I not seen what those penalties are? Or what's the current penalty if you don't get a rental certificate in your long term?
There are special places in the, in the recommended, recommended ordinance for those types of people. There's three specifically laid out. One is people that didn't get, don't get a license. And it's, we can start with the warning, the ticket, $100 a day, $200 a day, $300 a day, and if we need to take them to court, we can take them to court or revoke the license.
Okay.
Or prohibit a license in perpetuity.
Okay. Thank you. The other thing I wanted to mention was in regards to the caps. I know as an attorney, my brain is immediately thinking, of all the million different forms of ownership, you know, it's very easy to have, I've got an LLC here, I've got a nominee trust here, I've got a revocable trust here, I've got an S corp here, I've got a sole, I mean, my wife owns this one.
We had quite a debate last week about that.
I'm sure.
And we're pretty solid, I think. We're basing it on something that's held pretty well, the ABCC licensing is, was the model that we were looking for that. And they've got pretty, we feel that they have been fairly successful in their notification of those ownership requirements and how they go about doing that.
And I don't, I mean, my assumption is not that, sort of, the owner-occupied locals who reside in the town of Barnstable, when I'm thinking more, who's going to have the resources to do this?
Sure.
And to hire somebody like me are the investors. You know, those are the ones who are going to be thinking of the workarounds. So I guess that's it for the moment.
Thank you. Counselor Cullum, please.
Just one quick comment. I want to mention that in every one of the meetings that we've had where we've discussed any of these policies, we've always, I think, really aptly addressed the idea that we are working on six months of data. And I think there's a commitment from, from our group, for sure, and I would hope the whole council, to look after we have a full year of data and make sure things are working. So I, you know, I feel like the complaints that I've heard from the constituents are strong enough where something needs to be on the books in the form of an ordinance this year. And then we can commit to coming back and re-looking at it and fine-tuning it if that doesn't work. But I wouldn't want to leave the calls unanswered that we've heard from our constituents. Thank you.
If I may, the data that we do have, it's only six months. I don't think, if you, if, that data would change if we had an ordinance in place. It's like you alluded to, there is a serious conflict between the number of complaints we have and what people have said they complained. So if the system is in place, the next year's data would be significantly different. So I would say we have to do something. Just waiting another year, I don't know that that is going to change anything. I could extrapolate what we have for six months, and I think it'd probably be pretty close to the same. I think it will change based on what the policymakers put in place.
I just want to say on the, with respect to caps, there's a month of my life missing that I'll never get back, that we've gone around the table about 1,000 times on those.
Well, since, since we're talking about them, I wanted to respond to Counselor Starr's comments earlier. I think we could definitely put caps on the number of licenses that any particular owner could have, but I don't think we can differentiate between the owners to say, this type of owner can have two, and this type of owner can have four. I think we're going to run into all kinds of issues in terms of lack of uniformity and affecting people's property rights. So I definitely think you could put a cap, but I think it needs to be uniform.
I tried to push that very hard. I said, why don't we give preferential treatment to Barnstable residents? Why can't, you know, the out-of-towners get a license and we give Barnstable residents the latitude to have two, three? And Karen cautioned strongly, because I gave out the examples of shellfish licenses, act moorings, all these other things where we do give preferential treatment, and she made it very clear to me that, that's, that's public property, public access that you're giving preferential treatment. There's a much higher standard for telling people what they can do with their personal property.
I shouldn't have brought it up. There's more of my life slipping away.
Counselor Snip.
Thank you. I wanted to echo Counselor Cullum's comments, that what we're really trying to do here is strike a balance, because at this point, we really don't have enough information to refine, I mean, to really even come up with what an appropriate minimum would be. Because for every scenario where it might be someone who is in a single-family home in a cul-de-sac and possibly renting every single day, the more likely scenario is that in someone's house, they have an extra bedroom, and they are renting that house, maybe, that room for one or two nights. And speaking to Counselor Neary, we're, we're trying to create something that is enforceable, you know, that, that we're being reasonable in setting out what we think we can reasonably enforce, and know that this is a process that we can return to if we're finding that there's egregious rentals that are not being addressed by the general ordinance, and where we're trying to, you know, change behavior by bringing people out, out into the open and regulating their behavior of their property.
Any other counselors or members of the committee or staff that want to make any more comments? I would just like to make one, that the, again, thank you for the tremendous effort that every individual has put into this, this process, and all the public comment, and everything that people have put in. And it's, it's clear that there's some lot of angst tonight from people who have been doing it for a long time and depend on this. And I commend all of us for trying to be really considerate of our residents and our citizens and everyone's rights. And looking at, at what has been commented here, and responding to the rush, what we've, I think what intent was to try to, you know, so there wasn't rogue stuff going on, and people wanting to kind of know where we're going with all of this. So, one thing that was a theme is not to rush this and to get it right the first time. So I think if the committee needs more time, and you want more time, and even how are you going to pan this thing out? Because people are committed right now. People have signed contracts. People do have commitments. So I think that the, we're going to be looking for the committee to give us their feedback, and if you need to slow it down, or if we need to grandfather some stuff, or however you want to do that, I think it's part of the ongoing discussion. So I hope we can be gentle with each other, and the public, and the staff. All right? Thank you, thank you very, very much. Awesome. Thank you. Counselors, you have been sitting here for three and three-quarter hours. We're going to take, in our fairness, to the eight items that we have to look at, so that people aren't saying, you know, rush it through and not giving fairness to those items. We're going to take three, which you know will be four, maybe five, but let's, let's all go, and as soon as you're done doing what you have to do, come back and sit here so we can get started again, okay? Thank you. Counselors, please come back. Eric, I'm going to have you reading this. Thank you, counselors. We're going to go into orders of the day, and...
Move the question?
Very good. Thank you, Counselor Cullum. The first thing that we have to do is take a vote to extend past 11 o'clock.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're here.
Any nays? Thank you. Roads. Vice President Rap Crissetti, could you please read into the record item number 2020-080?
Yes, Mr. President. Under all business, this is a public hearing. Roll call, two-thirds vote. Item 2020-080, appropriation of loan order in the amount of $220,860 pursuant to temporary repairs to private roads program for certain private ways regarding Goodview Way, Barnstable Village, as presented.
Thank you. We have a first, we have a second. Any discussion? Oh, Dan, thank you, Dan. Sorry, Dan.
I can...
Sorry, Dan. Sorry. Sorry.
Temporary repair to private road program allows abutters to roads being repaired can be charged betterment assessments for 100% of the actual cost of repairs, which they can elect to pay in one lump sum or over a period of 20 years. This road will not be taken by the town of Barnstable and will remain a private road. A majority of the property abutters to Goodview Way, Barnstable Village have expressed an interest in having repairs made to their private road, and 69% of the abutters have signed a consent and acknowledgement agreement for betterment assessment. Proposed work includes engineering design, installation of new drainage structures, removal and replacement of the existing roadway pavement, cleaning of existing drainage structures, and final restoration. The cost of improvements is estimated at $220,860, with a cost per 13 abutters distributed as 12 full shares and one half share, not to exceed $17,670 per abutters' full share, and $8,840 per abutters' half share. There is no cost to the town of Barnstable, as all costs will be covered by betterments assessed on the abutters. The town will issue a bond to cover the cost of the repairs and use the revenue collected from the betterment assessments to make the annual loan repayments on the bond. Thank you.
This is open for public comment. At a public hearing, anyone like to speak on this item? Seeing none. Thank you. I will open this up for comments.
We have to make a motion.
Everyone want to close? Who would? All in favor of closing the public comment?
Aye.
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 Yes. That's unanimous. Madam Clerk, thank you. I just want to point out that normally I would have asked Counselor Starr to read this in, but he is the sponsor of this, so if you'd like to make any comments on this.
I only have one question. Is how do you get a half share?
If they're on two roads and they have driveways on two separate roads, so it's not their full access.
It's not their full frontage kind of thing access. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of Dan?
Move the question? Second.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor of item number 2020-08... Do we have to move the question?
Yes.
We had a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. So any further discussion? We moved it. So all those in favor of item number 2020-08... Oh, this is a roll call. Thank you very, very much, so that makes it easier. Thank you.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Rap Crissetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Steinhillbar?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you very mu... Thank you very much. So we're going to move into new business. Item number 2020-081. Could Counselor Lebec please read that into the minutes?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business, may be acted upon, majority vote. This is item number 2020-081, acceptance of a 2020 sustained traffic enforcement program step grant in the amount of $22,603 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Office of Grant and Research, Highway Safety Division, as written.
Second.
Yes. Vice President Rap Crissetti, please.
Mr. President, it's come to my attention that this item, I'd like to ask for an amendment to change the amount from $22,603 to the full amount of $44,000, which is in the resolve. I understand that this has come to the full amount. So may I make an amendment to change that amount?
Second.
We have a first, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Forty-four.
Are we going to vote on the amendment first?
Forty-four it is.
Oh, yeah. Chief, thank you very much, Chief Sannabin.
Mr. President, members of the council, Chief Sannabin, Barnstable Police Department. Correct. This is item number 2020-081. In December of 2019, the department received notice that we qualified for application to the sustained traffic enforcement grant in the amount of $44,000. We have recently received this week notification that we have been awarded the full $44,000, which will allow us to conduct focused traffic enforcement at specific intersections around town to increase traffic safety, and those intersections are listed within the body of the paperwork that you have in front of you. We are hoping to reduce our traffic fatalities and to decrease crashes. The fiscal impact of this is it is a reimbursement grant. There is no required matching on the part of town. We simply put in for what we've expended on an overtime basis, and will be reimbursed up to $44,000.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. We have one second to move the question. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you very much. All those in favor of item 2020-081 as amended? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Chief. Item number 2020-131, which went... I would ask Counselor Neary to please read that into the record.
Yes, President Hebert. This is new business. It may be acted upon. Requires a majority vote. It's item number 2020-031. It's transfer order in the amount of $14,000 for the traffic signal cabinet slash controller replacement, as written.
Second.
Okay. And we have Director Dan Santos.
Thank you. On February 7th, 2020, the Hyannis area experienced numerous power outages due to high wind gusts exceeding 70 miles per hour. Subject traffic signal cabinet and controller experienced a power surge that blew the circuit protection, resulting in damage to the computer board and all associated wiring. Due to the damage and age of the cabinet and control system, a complete replacement is required. The intersection, when this was written, was currently on flash but has been repaired, which created an unsafe condition for motorists. The available funds in the Department of Public Works personnel budget are due to vacancy savings from the turnover in several positions throughout the fiscal year. We're requesting to use some of these savings to cover this unanticipated expense. The total FY '20 operating budget appropriation for the Public Works Department is not changing. The town will file a claim with its insurance carrier, and any costs recovered will be credited to the general fund to offset the cost of this expenditure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Santos?
Second.
Okay. We have a first and a second. All those in favor of moving the question?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All those in favor of item number 2020-131, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Oh.
We wanted to make sure we voted to go past 11.
Oh, yes, we did. Yep. Thank you. All right. All right. Item number 2020-132. Counselor Cullum, could you please read that into the record?
Yes. Item number 2020-132, transfer order of $91,000 from the town council's operating reserve fund to the fiscal year 2020 Hyannis Youth and Community Center Enterprise Fund operating capital budget for the purpose of funding the evaporative condenser replacement, as written.
Second.
Okay. And so Dan, could you speak to that item, please?
Yes, I can. Thank you. On February 7th, 2020, the Hyannis Youth and Community Center ice refrigeration system experienced a small ammonia leak in the cooling tower condenser that was immediately identified, isolated, and temporarily repaired. Further investigation by our contractor for this equipment has found that the internal core of the cooling tower coil system has completely failed, is corroded, and needs complete replacement. There is an immediate need for this work to be performed to preserve the safety of the facility users, employees, and general public, as well as to prevent damage to the ice facilities and related equipment. Additionally, failure of the cooling tower will result in the loss of the ice services at the facility and impact the income to the enterprise account through the loss of business. Funding for this unforeseen expense is being requested from the town council's FY '20 operating reserve fund, which was budgeted for $250,000. Any remaining funds in the town council's reserve will close to the general fund surplus at the end of the fiscal year. There have been no other transfer requests to date from the reserve fund for this fiscal year. An insurance claim will be filed with the town's insurance carrier, and any costs recovered will be credited to the general fund to offset the cost of this expenditure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselors, any questions of Director Santos?
Second.
We have a move for the question. One, we have two. All in favor of moving the question?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those in favor of item number 2020-132, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Item number 2020-133, could you please read that into the record? Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you, Counselor President. This is new business, may be acted upon, and requires a majority vote. The transfer... Item number 2020-133, transfer order of $17,000 from the fiscal year 2020 Public Works Department personnel budget to the fiscal year 2020 Public Works Department operating expense budget for the purpose of funding the environmental assessment of a hydraulic oil spill.
Second.
We have a first, we have a second. Thank you. Director Santos, please.
Thank you. On July 3rd, 2019, a street sweeper operated by the Town of Barnstable Highway Department suffered a ruptured hydraulic line, which resulted in the discharge of approximately 30 gallons of hydraulic oil along the northbound lane of Route 132, south of the Cape Town Plaza, from the Tiki Port Restaurant to the intersection of Iannola Road and Airport Road. Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection and the Massachusetts contingency plan require licensed site professional oversight to investigate potential release to the environment. Based on the emergency response action undertaken by the Department of Public Works to apply and recover sand and absorbance to capture freestanding liquids, a release to the environment was averted. Seven cubic yards of sand and absorbance were later transported to a disposal facility under a hazardous waste manifest. Subsequent inspections of the area, release along the roadway in the nearby stormwater catch basins documented, no release to the environment had occurred. The available funds in the Department of Public Works personnel budget are due to vacancy savings from the turnover in several positions throughout the fiscal year. We are requesting to use some of these savings to cover this unanticipated expense. The FY '20 operating budget appropriation for the Public Works Department is not changing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have a first and a second. All in favor of moving the question?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All those in favor of item number 2020-133, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? That's unanimous. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Starr, could you please read into the record item number 2020-134?
Thank you. Thank you, President Hebert. This is new business, may be acted upon by majority vote. Item 2020-134, transfer order in the amount of $17,000 for salt shed field and structural analysis.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Thank you. And again, we have Director Santos. Thank you.
The Department of Public Works salt storage sheds located at the highway and transfer station facilities are nearing the end of their useful life and will require emergency repairs prior to the next snow and ice season. These funds will enable the department to identify structural deficiencies, assess the structural capacity of the building framing, and provide recommendations for repair. The sheds are utilized extensively during the snow and ice season, except this season. My goodness. And the safety of personnel and equipment is jeopardized by their existing condition. The scope will include performance of field measurements of the two facilities, determine their framing size, and their structural integrity. The available funds in the Department of Public Works personnel budget are due to vacancy savings from the turnover of several positions. We are requesting to use some of these savings to cover this analysis. The total fiscal year 2020 operating budget appropriation for the Public Works Department is not changing. Thank you.
Okay. We have a move the question, first and second. All in favor of moving the question?
Aye.
Okay. All those in favor of item number 2020-134, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? Okay. That's unanimous, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Steinhillbar, please, could you read into the record item number 2020-135?
Yes, Mr. President.
That's what we just did. We can do it again.
I'd like to refer item 2020-135 to a public hearing on March 5th, 2020. Authorization of a housing development incentive program tax increment exemption agreement between the Town of Barnstable and JP Baxter House, LLC, for eight new market rate residential units located at Zero and 17 High School Road, Hyannis. units located at Zero and 17 High School Road, Hyannis, as written.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. All those in favor of item number 2020-135, indicate by saying aye to refer this item to a public hearing on March 5th. What do you say?
Mine says 19.
Mine says 19.
So referring to March 19th. What's that?
It's the 5th? Okay. All right. All right. So that's what we have in the record and that, so we're going to go, we're going to refer this to a public hearing on March 5th, 2020. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Our final item of the evening, I'm going to ask Counsel-- Are we okay? Counselor Schnep, please, if you could read into the record item number 2020-136.
Yes, Mr. President. This is an item of new business, referred to a public hearing on March 19th, 2020. Item 2020-136, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $400,000 of community preservation funds for the creation of four affordable rental units located at 560 West Main Street, Hyannis, Mass.
Second. We have a first and a second. All those in favor of referring to a public hearing, item number 2020-136, to March 19th, 2020, indicate by saying aye. Thank you very much. So this brings us to end of new business.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor of adjournment with our next meeting being March 5th, 2020? We have a first and a second. All those in favor of adjournment? Thank you very much. Thank you for your good work. Have a good night. Safe travels.